Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Taos County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for today, September 2nd, 2014. For the record, it is 9:07 a.m. I'm Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Veroni.
Present.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Present.
Chairman Romano.
Present.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
President.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
President.
Commissioner Duda.
President.
At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Abeta to leave us for the judge's allegiance.
(inaudible) flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda, Commissioners, Manager, Crane. Any changes?
No, we're legal departments, chairman.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, ma'am, Clerk.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Veroni.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes. Okay, citizens' concerns. I do believe we did have Mr. Counselor Andrew Goncalves. He just texted me a while ago. He was busy with a meeting at the Kit Carson Electric Co-op, but he wanted to come and speak for the town on behalf of the airport. Mayor, Mayor Veroni, did you want to add to that?
I know that we do have a meeting this afternoon, myself and Edward and Mr. Valles and the town staff concerning the airport. Just wanting to make sure that if a permit is required, that we address that. If a permit is not required, then we'll address that also. So we just want to make that determination, and then the attorneys will make that determination. And the bid was, there was a bid opening, and a local contractor did, was the lowest bidder, I believe. There's some time that has to go by, or that is fully in place.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. Anyone that wants to speak at this time, citizens' concerns, Ms. Abeta? Good morning again.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Ana Abeta, Chief Nursing Officer at Holy Cross Hospital. Commissioners, thank you very much for hearing me. This is just a little bit of information I wanted you guys to know. As you guys know, the birthing center has announced that they are closing their doors, and I just wanted to let you all know that we are working with them, and our Women's Health Institute will be moving to the birthing center so our certified nurse midwives can continue doing births outside of the hospital. So there would be continuing practice of deliveries at the birthing center by the certified nurse midwives. So we are moving forward with that. I did want you guys to know, we did not anticipate any changes to the OB service in the hospital at all. But this is new. It will be covered, I believe, in the newspaper sometime very soon, and it's just really exciting for us. It's something that we know that the community did not want to see go away, and we were able to work with the board from the birthing center to make this happen. So that will be happening. So our OB-GYN physicians and our nurse practitioners will be in that office, but our OB physicians will not be delivering in the office. It'll be the certified nurse midwives, and it'll be a low-risk delivery zone. Okay?
And Chairman, the birthing center was not an arm of the hospital at all, correct?
No, it was not. It had its own board. It continues to have its own board. So we're working with their board to rent the building to put our WHI in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, and the other thing that will give us the opportunity, I think this is important because we would clear the offices where the WHI is right now and be able to move our wound care service in there and able to expand that service. We're pretty limited in space and unable to expand, and we really want to expand that service. That's a great need to this community is our wound care service.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much, Ms.
This Chairman, I just want to thank Ms. Abeta for bringing us the news. It sounds like a really good use of our resources in the community, and we appreciate the update very much.
I just, we just want people to know that we are committed to the OB service in this community, and this is one way that we want to assure them that we are.
Okay. Any other questions, your comments, questions? Thank you, Ms. Abeta.
Commissioner Sanchez. Chairman, Commissioners, I just want to thank the Commissioners and the Manager. We did the honoring the 1942, 200th National Guard baton veterans from Taos County. We had a total of 70, it was all the way up to Amaya. So we got together on Sunday, we had the Medal of Honor recipient. I didn't really think he was in attendance. And we also had one of our baton veterans, Baldamar Tejarrera of Coseya, also in attendance. And I want to thank Commissioner Veroni. I want to thank Commissioner Joe Mike Duda and our manager, Mr. Archuleta, for supporting me on that, and they donated some money, and what I did with that, we paid for some of the breaks that were put down for the veterans, and then also the ones that donated, we put their names on another brick for their sponsors. So it really went well. We had a good, good attendance, and I just want to thank the Commissioners and the Manager and the staff. They did a proclamation for those veterans, so it was well received. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Mr. Counselor Andrew Goncalves, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Mayor. Mr. Malone, Mr. Manager, I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk with you guys this morning. And the real reason I'm here is just on behalf of the city, as our mayor and Commissioners sit here, to ask for your continued support of our airport expansion project. It's vital, as I'm sure you guys know, and it's the one last current corridor we have the availability to grow in. So just, again, we'd like your continued support of our airport.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks, Mayor.
And I did let know that the bid was, we did have a bid opening, and there was a local contractor that received the, they were the low bidder, but there was some time that needs to pass before that becomes official. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Councilman, thanks for coming by today. What's the timeline? Can you give us any basic, rough timeline?
Well, timeline right now that we have is that we had the bid opening last week, and we will have the award bid at our next council meeting, which is September the 8th.
And the construction period is scheduled to run for how long?
It was originally three years. I think it's been accelerated to two. So we'll go in two phases now as opposed to three.
And are they expected to work through the winter?
Yes.
Do we need a permit? Has staff looked at the question of the building permit? There will be a need for a permit, but the details of how that will proceed are under discussion. Well, thanks so much for the update. Look forward to it.
Thanks, Commissioner.
And Mr. Counselor Goncalves, the importance of an airport. I think one of the best arguments that I've heard for those who want the airport is if there was an emergency situation, a fire or something like that, how would that airport be useful?
Well, the ability to bring in larger aircraft for one. But I think the outlying safety issue, and then you can toss it around in many different aspects, but is the pilots that fly in there. And having that crosswinds is crucial. At the last, there was a forum meeting that I was unable to attend because of, we were at the New Mexico Municipal League. A lot of people, you know, questioned whether the need for the longer runway. And there was a gentleman with the Civil Air Patrol, I think he was a chaplain or pastor with St. James's School. And he said that irregardless of the size of aircraft or the weight of aircraft, that because of our low altitude, I mean our high altitude, it was absolutely necessary to have a longer runway to have the proper takeoff and landing. And that's even in a smaller sized aircraft. So, you know, above all, I think if it saves one life, it's well worth it.
And Commissioner, and Chairman, and Counselor, you know, one of the couple of things, you know, we keep, you know, lately, there's been two major accidents around the communities where these flight for lives have actually, we've lost lives because they've crashed. And fixed wing is a lot of the ways that we move emergency care for patients to Denver, emergency patients to Texas, and different areas where we continue to move patients out of our hospital that need critical care, that they can't care from here, that they're, they need to go to that next level of care. And the helicopters aren't the way to transport those patients, and a lot of times, they transport them on fixed wings. And again, there's big times where they can't actually take off from our airport. They actually have to transfer a helicopter, then put them on a fixed wing, and then this way it gives us that, another link, a life link to some of the major airport, uh, hospitals in the region. And, you know, again, hopefully, we can work with the Forest Service. The Forest Service is a big integral part, you know, and BLM, you know, in the event of another catastrophic fire, that we can actually bring a plane that will actually help in the fighting of forest fires within the region. Hopefully, maybe we can attract them to actually be based out of Taos, since, you know, the Kit Carson National Forest is a big, big, big area, and, you know, we continue to be their support for that.
Thank you, Mayor Veroni. And I know that there have been a series of accidents in the last, you know, I think more accidents appears than before. Has there been a determination as to what the cause has been of these accidents? Is it due to the airport or?
Well, if you talk to airport staff, Commissioner, it's really with regards to the fact that most of those planes get, end up getting blown off the runway. And in certain, several instances, it's been where the approach was fine and, you know, the crosswinds got us, blew them off the runway. So that's been a big portion of it. Some of it's been pilot error, but more often than not, it's the crosswinds.
Okay. And Mr. Archuleta, Manager Archuleta, as far as the GRT percentages that are being allocated, that we've committed, how does that work? What is the status on that?
Mr. Chairman, I think I probably have more knowledge about that. At the next changeover of the GRT, which will be January 1, and the tax and revenue will switch that to the county because of the annexation not taking place. And since we have some members of the town here, I want to remind everybody, the town needs to send in a notification to tax and revenue by October 1st. So as long as that's done in a timely fashion, the brush receipts will switch to the county and then we're obligated according to the agreement that was reached.
Okay. And so, Mayor Veroni, is somebody doing their, the town's house?
We'll make sure they're on. Any other questions?
Any other questions, Commissioners? You were looking for, the telephone conversation that we had, you were looking for some sort of the letter of support from the Commission?
Yeah, and I think that after hearing the attorney with regards to the need for the permit, should probably clear a lot of that out. But still, resolution support.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if I could just, shortly after the Commission meeting today, we will have to be having a meeting on that. Our planning director, myself, the town mayor, and the town manager will be sitting down also with our legal team and their legal team to discuss that, flush all of that out.
Today was the year that we could all get together to actually do that.
Okay. Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Counselor. Ma'am, there was somebody else before you, Mr. Whaley? Go ahead and come forward.
Me?
Well, both of you.
Hi, I was at the meeting at the council, where Goncalves is.
Say your name for the record.
Oh, it's Maria Pimelo. And something came up, this little airport doesn't have a tower, and that all the pilots are, everything is unregulated, they can do whatever. So to me, is what about addressing that before going to another phase of bringing something mega, mega? Do you know what I'm saying? So that's where I'm confused. Why not talk about that first?
That's an issue with the FAA.
Right, but before approving anything, that should even be looked at as far as if it's even legal to have an airport with no tower and supposedly all the pilots unregulated? What is that, though? Is that true? Is that the way it is, the way it's run over there?
That's the way it's been for years and years.
Right, so that's what it's.
And that's the way they are all around the country.
And so, so when it's brought up, that there's all these accidents and all of this, and the concern of those, what colonialists people, the surrounding communities, that according to my information, they haven't even been notified? They don't even know that this is going on? So to me, is what about targeting the people, seeing what they feel about this, how this is going to impact them? Because as it is, I kept hearing at that meeting the other night, that there's all these accidents and everything, and then we hear at the end that there's no tower and there's no regulation as to how they come in, they go out, it's like a free-for-all. So to me, is now why not address that, that's legality, it's illegalities, before it's moved to another phase? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Whaley. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to give you a little update here. As far as I know, in the Art and Artifacts Review Committee, Elsie Hill has notified the artist finalist, I think, anyway, I hope. And I wanted to remind you that we're going to have this historic photo show this fall at the Paul Arts and Mural Room, and it'll be about 50 photos similar to these, which we will then move to the complex, thanks to the Heelys. And there will also be a lecture on the murals, on the frescoes by David Witt and Richard Hill. And also, thanks to Kit Carson Electric Co-op, we're going to have a flat screen TV up there in the mural room, or maybe in the hallway, where people can see hundreds of photos on the loop, and we'll also make that available for this flat screen here in the foyer, if you want to put them up. The only other thing I want to say, I can't be here in the afternoon because I'm taking a class in Albuquerque, but with regard to the old county courthouse, I just hope that, you know, the Commission can find the political will to make some kind of decision. I spoke with Richard Marchese, from whom I took a grant writing course, and is giving, he's also giving, he gives grant writing courses to Main Street and the Arts and Culture District, and is giving one this month. And I asked him about the status of the old county courthouse with regard to grants, and he said that, because I said we have the architecture planning, we have all that stuff. He said you also need an engineering study, an archaeology study, and an environmental study. So you need those three studies to go on, and those things take some time. So I just wanted to bring that to the Commission's attention. Any questions?
Really appreciate, Mr. Whaley, that you're keeping on top of the old courthouse issue, and hopefully, we can in the very near future utilize your assistance.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. We're all behind you guys, whatever you decide, and whatever the town decides to do, or anyway. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Whaley.
Thank you, Luis. This was a fortuitous meeting this morning for this flat screen TV.
And in that, those pictures that you're going to present, is there going to be any of the old airport?
No, you know, you know, we, these are all 1940, '41 WPA photos. We have some earlier photos, maybe we'll pick one up. It's prior to the WPA era, which is, that is designated by the grant. But we do have a single-engine plane shown landing at Taos Pueblo, and there are people there greeting it on foot and on horseback. And I just think things were simpler in those days and much easier, you know, so. But maybe we'll provide that photograph. Thank you.
I did see that picture. Thank you, Mr. Whaley. Okay. And Mr. Reyes, thank you very much for the contribution of the flat screen TV as well. Mr. Whaley, when is that showing? When is it going to be on?
I think it's the 23rd, around the 23rd, 25th of September. Whatever that Saturday is.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
We'll notify you.
Okay. Anyone else? Stephen? Good morning.
Stephen's Hall? I'd like to say something about what Andrew just said. The aircraft was underpowered, and the pilot agreed that it was. You should listen to that meeting. Common sense tells you that there really is no need for, there is no need for an airport. You may want the airport, you may want to use it for development, but there is no need for the airport. Listen to that testimony here. When I last spoke, I was sort of not cut short, and my five minutes ran up with respect to Blackstone, Mr. King, Mr. Romero, so I'll start off there. The landings, I don't understand this, this mix of appeal, and you know, somebody needs to explain it to you, how this is being handled. The application is, is, and it falls under the old regulations, but the appeal, it is an appeal. The appeal falls under the new regulations. The new regulations say, 10-12, which is referenced in the legal verdisment, appeals to decisions of the Board of Adjustment or Planning Commission, section number B or letter B, a recommendation by the Planning Commission to the Board of County Commissioners such as recommendations on a major development shall not be the subject of an appeal. It's that simple. It also says in 10-3, which is referencing the appeal, if I'm not mistaken, appeal hearing procedures, 10-318, says the audio or videotape record of the hearing shall be reviewed by the reviewing body in open meeting or if such review is not accomplished through an open and plain and open and clear each room where the reviewing or shall certify in writing that he should personally review the video or audiotape record of the hearing below prior to the appeal hearing. Have you listened to it? Have any of you listened to it? Only party B says only parties to the appeal, their agent or attorney, and Taos county staff, will be allowed to address the reviewing body. Yet it was open to the public. Why was it open to the public? Was this a special exception? I finished up by saying that the lodging in the main house, and this is quote, consists of 23 luxurious, guests, suites, and common areas, and the offering associated amenities like alcohol service. Advocate seeks to, this is quote, applicant, this is from their application, applicant seeks to market the ranch to individuals in small groups for upscale retreats, conferences, and unique vacation experiences rather than offer lodging to the general public. I said, in no way does that represent traditional northern New Mexico agriculture. This proposal does not in any way stand rightfully in the long history and tradition of sustainable community agriculture in northern New Mexico, an agriculture tradition intended to feed and sustain the community. Quote, everybody wants to sustain the rural character of Blackstone Ranch. That's one of their handouts. In no way is Blackstone Ranch meant to feed and sustain this particular local community in this particular watershed, nor is it the intent of Black Interest Limited Partnership to feed this community. Blackstone Ranch is little more than an expensive backdrop for groups of wealthy retreaters. You need only read the, only read the report prepared by Ann Adams, Holistic Management International, dated 10/11/2014, and included in Blackstone's recent appeal. Dr. Adams says, and she is a holistic management certified educator and interim CEO of whatever that is, quote, there must be, this is about Blackstone Ranch, quote, "There must be great clarity to run the ranch as much like a business as possible, given its additional, its additional purpose of being an amenity for the hospitality portion of the operation." Did you not read the application? This is about creating a hospitality organization, portion, whatever you want to call it. This is about appealing to wealthy retreaters. This is about servicing wealthy retreaters, to whom I say, go home and retreat to your own watershed. Tackle the problems of understanding sustainability in your own watershed. Learn the particular needs and requirements of building sustainability in your own backyard. That's for the revolutionary teams in your own backyard. Taos does not need to become, nor should it become, a nursing home for tired and weary retreaters, wealthy ones at that. Stay-home retreaters. Attend to your own neighborhoods, to their problems and to their potential. Adam Baker said it was built, and these are quotes, "Built to entertain guests, group and retreat conferences, and it is impossible financially to sustain." This is what Adam Baker said. So tell us why and how Blackstone operation has permitted in 2008 is impossible financially to sustain its operations at this point in time. Tell us. Show us the books, give us the numbers. Bring us the numbers, bring us your books. Show this Commission, show this community why you have not been able to sustain your sustainable operations. Black Interest Limited Partnership has merely made a claim which this Commission has swallowed, hook, line, and sinker. It says here in their application, number of guests with range of numbers of 5 to 30 people staying at the ranch for three to seven days, two to four times a month. At one point, they say, anywhere from 5 to 40, the average is 30. If you take 30 times seven days, because this is what they could do, they could do it for seven days, 30 guests, four times a month, it says this is what they could do. That's 840 guest nights. Did anybody think about that? About the little tubes, the toothpaste that these people are going to take one day out with a little toothpaste, run it goes into the landfill that we're servicing their needs? Have you thought about that? Has anybody thought about these numbers? And it says right here, again, in Planning Commission's 2008 approval, existing county approval places, no limitations. These people are looking for no limitations. That's what they're paving the ground for. You're not paying attention. The size or number of guests, no limitations on the size or number of guest events at the ranch. No limitations on the ability of the ranch to generate revenue associated with events. Pay attention. They're paving the way for the further commodification and gentrification of this entire landscape, and you're not listening up. You think that, gee, these folks are wealthy, they're going to kind of build a nice place, and I'll finish up quickly. Mr. Romero, that's, that's what they're after. This is not about agricultural traditions, not at all. It's about, it's about failed promises. And I'd like, if I can, to read one very long paragraph and conclusion, Mr. Romero, Mr. Chairman. This is by Wendell Berry in his essay, Standing By Words. The Berry, and he says, "I come in conclusion to the difference between projecting the future and making a promise. The projecting of futurologists," that's the people of Blackstone, that's Black Interest Limited, "the projecting of futurologists uses, uses the future as the safest possible context for whatever is desired. It binds one only to selfish interest, but making a promise binds one to someone else's future. If the promise is serious enough, one is brought to it by love and in awe and in fear. Fear, awe, and love bind us to no selfish aims but to each other, and they enforce a speech more exact, more clarifying, and more binding than any speech that can be used to sell or advocate some quote-unquote future. For when we promise in love and awe and fear, there's a certain kind of mobility that we give up. We give up the romanticism of progress that is always shifting its terms, always shifting its terms, as these people have done ever since the day they applied for their permits." Look at how they have shifted their terms. "That is always shifting its terms to fit its occasions. We are speaking where we stand, and we should stand afterwards in presence of what we said." Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and continue with the agenda for today. We'll go on to the approval of the minutes, three sets of minutes, starting with item A, July 29, 2014. This was a special meeting, Commissioners. Done with approval? Okay, I'll go ahead and second, ma'am, Clerk.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Veroni.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes. Item B, July 29, 2014. So on to approve. Second, ma'am, Clerk.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Veroni.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes. Okay. The next item, item seven, awards and recognitions. Item A, Employee of the Month certificates for the month of August 2014. Today, we are presenting to Mr. Toby Garcia from Facilities and Ms. Bernadette Miel from the Adult Attention Center. Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if I could ask the Commission to please come down for the awards.
Okay, so we also have the certificates of appreciation for later on, Mr. Arthur Ortiz and Nai Alurey Pacheco for the service in the Taos County Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Taos County would like to congratulate Toby for his achievement of winning the Employee of the Month for the August 2014. Toby is recognized for his outstanding effort and dedication to his position as custodian. Toby conducts daily cleaning of the county facility with much effort and pride. Toby goes above and beyond his duties to ensure everything is completed and presentable for county employees and the public. He often volunteers to help in areas where staff is absent. Okay, so we also have the certificates of appreciation for later on, Mr. Arthur Ortiz and Mayne O'Rudy Pacheco for the service of the Taos County Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Taos County would like to congratulate Toby for his achievement of winning the Employee of the Month for the August 2014. Toby is recognized for his outstanding effort and dedication to his position as custodian. Toby conducts daily cleaning of the county facility with much effort and pride. Toby goes above and beyond his duties to ensure everything is completed and presentable for county employees and the public. He often volunteers to help in areas where staff is absent, and he is friendly to each employee, greeting everybody by name and making friendly conversation. Toby's positive attitude and personality is refreshing. He sets a great example for other Taos County employees. Taos County is grateful to have Toby as an employee. Thank you for your hard work, your dedication. It is greatly appreciated. And with that, we have a certificate for Toby. We also have a day off certificate that he could take in his leisure. And I have the facilities manager here who would also like to say a few words.
Members of the commission, Mr. Manager, members of the public, I'm Toby's supervisor, and I want to bet you know how lucky I am to have Toby working for us and for all of us here at the county. Been about a year, six months, Toby became head custodian, and I'm really happy to have him here because he makes my job easy. He takes ownership of the facility, he brings me a supply list, he lets me know of any faults or issues that have arisen. He's always here early, and he always leaves late, and I tend to leave about 5:15, 5:30 on occasion, and Toby's still here. So I think we're very lucky to have him on board. I just want you guys to know that he works hard, he treats everybody very respectfully, and he makes me look good, and I can't ask for more. So thank you, guys.
Toby, if you could stand there and get the commission a little closer. I said cheese. Thank you. Thank you, Toby.
Commissioners, if I could ask you to stay down here. Ms. Bernadette Emile was not able to come today, so we will do that in another commission meeting. And so next, I'd like to ask Mr. Edward Martinez to please come up for the presentations. And I believe the first point is...
Thank you, Mr. Archuleta. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Malone, members of the public, Mrs. Pacheco, Mrs. Ortiz, and your immediate families, thank you for joining us this morning. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I could just have a couple of minutes. I wish to recognize the late Arthur Art Ortiz and the late Mayne O'Rudy Pacheco for their service to the citizens of Taos County. Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Pacheco were fairly similar to one another. Both grew up in Taos, attended Taos schools, were very athletic, received college degrees, and were successful members of the community. Both served in many capacities in Taos County, and both were Republicans. I think that I speak for a lot of individuals in that we had the pleasure of working with both Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Pacheco while they served in the planning commission and as members of several steering committees. As a matter of fact, prior to the arrival of Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Pacheco, planning staff was struggling to lead a quorum for planning commission meetings. I am very proud to state that during Mr. Ortiz's, Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Pacheco's tenure on the planning commission, a lack of a quorum was rarely an issue. Mrs. Ortiz, Mrs. Pacheco, I think that you'll agree with me that both Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Pacheco loved their Taos and wanted the best of the citizens of Taos County. Both hoped for more involvement and participation from the citizens of Taos and Taos County. But above all, both were all about family. They both loved their families dearly. Mrs. Ortiz and family, Mrs. Pacheco and family, a heartfelt thank you for sharing your husbands, fathers, with Taos County and the important roles they had as being active members of their community. On behalf of the Taos County Board of Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone, the Taos County Planning Commission, and planning staff, I present the certificate of appreciation to Mrs. Marilyn Ortiz and family, and Mrs. Angelica Pacheco and family. Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I may, I would like to go ahead and read the inscription on the, on the certificate. And Mrs. Ortiz, if you would please stand. And Mrs. Pacheco, if you would please stand and join us as well. Okay, if you, if you need to sit. First, the certificate of appreciation to Mr. Arthur Art Ortiz for your outstanding contributions and commitment to the citizens of Taos County. Your exceptional work ethic and no-nonsense approach to getting the job done has resulted in great strides in not only controlling the development of Taos County, but also the protection of the health, safety, welfare of the citizens of Taos County. Your hard work in all aspects of being a planning commissioner greatly appreciated. Eight-plus years of service to Taos County. Thank you for a great job.
Commissioners, if you could get a quick photo. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Pacheco, if you would be so kind, please come forward. And the family, if the family would like to join, Mrs. Pacheco, please come forward. Mrs. Pacheco and family, on behalf of Taos County, we present to you the certificate of appreciation to Mayne O'Rudy Pacheco for your outstanding contributions and commitments to the citizens of Taos County, your exceptional work ethic and no-nonsense approach to getting the job done has resulted in great strides in not only controlling the development of Taos County, but also the protection of the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Taos County. Your hard work in all aspects of being a planning commissioner greatly appreciated. Twelve-plus years of service to Taos County. Thank you for a great job.
Edward, I'd like to say a few words.
Just get a quick photo. You can squeeze in just a little bit. Here, we'll say cheese, please. Thank you. Mrs. Pacheco.
Of course, I'd like to say thank you for recognizing these efforts, but I'm also here to also recognize you, that you're here in Taos, Taos, New Mexico, like to sing that song, the beautiful Taos. But it hasn't been easy for all of us Taosanos, so I'm very proud of you, that you're here, still running our town. I'm talking about the Spaniards. It's been so difficult. We didn't become a state until we were the second to the last state that was recognized as a state. We were a territory forever. Do you know why? I do. My father had always read history, understood it. He read the documents, the old Spanish documents, the new ones, and the old ones and everything. So I grew up knowing not the history books that I read in school, but the history books are the truth. I want you to know that I was told at one point, said I could not go to a class in junior high, the seventh grade, as I was reading a book of a child's history of New Mexico, seventh grade. And my father read it, his name was Escipul Martínez, and what he read in that book, he said was not history. And he refused for me to read it. And he didn't understand why that book was being issued at the schools. So I got to go to the principal's office, it was Mr. Medina, Veto Medina at the time. Everybody was looking at me happy that I didn't have to go to class, but it was a little bit frightening. And it came out in the newspapers because he read an article about that history book that we were to read. So it's been very difficult to hold your own, even in Taos, New Mexico. And I know the battle. I know our history and why we were a territory for so long. First, they had to take away Guadalupe San, as much as they could away from the Spaniards that settled. It was difficult for you, but you still stayed, and fought, and you tried, and you tried. So for a long time, you were successful. Now it's a different time. Now we have to make sure that our children go to school and get an education. I know that. Now, uh, it was difficult, you barely, you just barely made it, but we still, some of us still kept our land. We lost our land grants, we lost an awful lot of tradition and other things because it was so hard to make a living. So when I, uh, Mr. Pacheco came, my husband, to these meetings, even though later on he wasn't doing that well, I liked that he wanted to be involved. We need a lot more Taosanos to get involved. And when I looked at you today, I'm happy to see you there. You have to keep fighting. It is difficult. I appreciate the certificate because he really tried. He, we thought we almost, he almost made it, or perhaps another year, but he didn't. But he loved Taos, he was very proud of his heritage, and he was very proud of the battle we had to fight. It's still not written in the history books, but someone has to correct the history books. It's going to have to be one of our children. But you're here, and we have a mayor, and we have people here. You're still, you're still doing the good fight, and I'm very proud of you. And I'm very proud of getting this Taos certificate of appreciation for Mayne O'Rudy Pacheco on behalf of his family, Angelica Pacheco, and my children. I want, I would like him to be here because I want to impress upon him how important it is that you participate. I have my son here, Mayne.
Over here, in the back.
Okay. He was one of my sons, there's Pat Rudy, if you're high-hanging, my son's in Taos. I expect him when he retires, I want him to also contribute. I have our daughter, Stephanie, also retired, that lives in Taos. I want her to also contribute. And I'm very happy to accept this award from the people of Taos. Thank you.
We'll go on to item eight, presentations, item eight, the quality presentation from Holy Cross Hospital. Got Miss Lynda Chase, good morning, RN, MBA, CP HQ, if you can define those for us.
I have a master's in Business Administration and Healthcare Management. I'm also an RN, and I'm a certified professional in healthcare quality.
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us be here this morning to make this presentation to you. I think you'll find that going to be very enlightening to hear about what we're doing at Holy Cross Hospital and what makes Holy Cross Hospital be the excellent hospital that it is. A little bit about me before I get started, though, I've been working at Holy Cross Hospital for thirty years. I'm a resident of Taos, my family's from here, I have a huge extended family. My father was a school teacher here in Rosso, by Des, and Arroyo Hondo, many, many years ago, in the sixties and early seventies. So I have a lifetime commitment to Taos. I mean, um, as you have heard from very many people over the last several weeks, that it's very important to keep our hospital alive, and I'm happy to say that it's not only alive, but it is thriving. The toilet would be on it, but I don't have my... Sorry about that. You should have gotten a copy of this for your, for your packets. And what I'm going to talk about is quality at Holy Cross Hospital. I'm going to start with customer satisfaction. That's very important for us. Our, how our patients see us, what our patients think about us is very important. And it's so important that even the state, the federal government, has set up a program where all hospitals that get money from Medicare from CMS, Medicare and Medicaid, are required to participate in this program. It's called the H-CAP program or Customer Satisfaction Surveys. H-CAP stands for Hospital Consumer Assessment of Comfort Providers and Systems. And this basically means that how are our customers perceiving us? What is, how are they perceiving the quality of care that they're getting? What is their hospital experience like? And it gives them an opportunity to answer a survey and get that back to the federal government to tell them what they think of the care that they got while they're running the hospital. As I said, all hospitals that receive money from Medicare and Medicaid are required to participate in this, except for the DA system, children's hospitals, and cancer centers. So all the rest of the hospitals in the country are required to participate in this. Um, the purpose for this is, again, so that it gives the, it's a standardized set of questions that every patient who has ever been in the hospital, well, not every patient, but a lot of patients who has ever been in the hospital, gets a standardized set of questions that, um, they then send that to a provider, and they collate all that information, and they can, are able to tell what the quality of care in that, at their hospital. The only thing that we have control, that hospitals have control over, is who they're going to choose to be their, their provider, their person that's going to send out the survey. There are several companies that work with hospitals to do this, Press Gate, Avatar International, Health, we happen to use Avatar International out of Florida. And again, it's, it's a standardized set of questions. We have no control over the number of questions or over the type of questions, but every patient who receives a survey throughout the United States is answering the same questions and the same number of questions. Um, we look at both inpatient and outpatient surveys that we result. In this particular slide, it shows our inpatient and outpatient scores together. To look at the overall score, it's eighty-nine point one five, the database average, and the database average in this particular case is all the hospitals that use Avatar International. Avatar International has inquiry from five to six hundred hospitals that they work for. So this is the database average of six hundred hospitals, it's ninety point two seven, and our score is eighty-nine point one five. It's in the yellow because we would like to at least be equal to the... It's in the yellow because we would like to at least be equal to the database average or more above it. If you look at the rest of those, emergency services exceeds what the database average is. They're above what the score is. And inpatient services and obstetrics are areas that we normally have to work on. We have corrective action plans in place for that. This is an important slide, I think, because the numbers that you were looking at before were just numbers in time. They don't really tell you much. But if you look at this control chart, it tells you what is going on over a period of time. And so this is from January 2014 through eight, or July 2014. So it tells you over time what's going on. And if you look at. The. If you look at May of 2013, we were doing pretty well during that period of time. And then suddenly, our scores dropped. They went from May 2014, we were up around, looks like maybe 91%, 92%. And they dropped in September down to around 88%. This was during that period of time last year when we lost the three general surgeons. And the reason I brought, put this slide on here is because I think it's really important for people to understand that what happens, what's going on in the hospital does impact the community and how the community feels about us. So our scores dropped during that period of time. They came back up in September. September and November, they were up. That's when we lost the two new surgeons. And then in December and January, we had layoffs. Again, our scores dropped. They came back up again. And then in April, we started with changes that we were starting to make in the hospital with the hospitalist program. And you can see how our scores dropped. And now again, they've come back up. And I'm curious to see what's gonna happen in August and September. And hopefully, they'll continue to be under upward trend. The green line in the middle there shows that from 2013, January 2013 to current time, we have dropped a little bit in customer satisfaction. Any questions about this part?
Ms. Chairman, just real quick. What was the, the, what did you attribute the June 2014 drop to?
The. The June 2014 drop, I think, is still the end result of what was going on with the hospitalists and the press that we were giving regarding what's happening in the hospital. One of my roles in the hospital is to be a patient advocate. I do go in and talk to patients and ask them how they're doing, how things are going during their stay. Ask them if they have any concerns. One of the things that I hear, heard often during, during those periods of time was, you know, I was worried about coming to the hospital because I read so much in paper about what was happening, or I heard things. But now that I'm here, the care has been great. And so we try to do at least three or four times a week to go in and see those patients who have been in there for a couple of days and ask them what their care has been like and if there's anything that we can do to, to help them during their stay. Has there been anybody who has given them exceptional care? So that we can make sure our staff knows about that? Or have there been any problems that we can fix before daily? We try to do service recovery as quickly as possible. The next slide shows those questions that are asked on the inpatient surveys. They are looking at eight particular questions. Communication with doctors, communication with nurses, communication about medication. And they're looking at this. And I'm just gonna quickly cover two, two scores. Now CMS, when you look at the scores on the page before, they were like 69%. I'm wondering, what is that all about? CMS only looks at top box. And top box means that they're only looking at those scores where patients gave us a score of nine and 10 out of a scale of one to 10. So if you look at these numbers here, the numbers down at the bottom, 136 and 211. If you total that first number of respondents, there's probably, I think it was, can't remember right off, but I think it was about 500 responses to that particular question. Of that 500 responses, 347 of those patients gave us a score of nine and 10, which is very good. That, that was 69.4% of those patients, of those 500 patients, gave us a score of nine and 10. Now, our goal is to try to move the ones, the zeros and ones up to the next highest level. And we've got corrective action plan, plans in our departments to be able to do that. But if you look at the database average, again, 71.16 and we were at 69.4. So we have some work to do. We understand that, but, but we're not that far off. Again, this is just another graph that looks at it over time. You know, we're not looking at the numbers just today. We need to see what we're doing over time. And the green line shows that we are making some improvement. It's a trend upwards and that's a good thing. One of the things that we can get from Avatar International is when we're looking at our scores is that we can compare ourselves to other hospitals. In this particular case, we're comparing ourselves to our four closest competitors. Los Animos, Presbyterian, San Jose Indian Hospital and St. Vincent's Hospital. Now, one thing about CMS is that their data is always one year behind. So when you look at the numbers here, 69, 65 and 71, that was from one year ago. That was from October 2012 to September 2013. The blue number here on the left is our current number. So that's where we are today. So you can see we've made a little bit of improvement. But you can look at how we compare to Los Animos, Espanola, and St. Vincent's especially. This slide.
Good. Mr. Chairman, you should ask a question real quick on that. I guess my question is, they provide other services that we don't provide here. How is that in comparison and are those taken into account?
I'll show you in a minute.
Thank you.
This particular slide right here is the Hospital Compare website, where anybody can go onto this site. It's hospitalcompare, hhs.gov. And you type in your zip code right here or desk word and it'll bring up the hospitals within a 200 mile radius of this zip code. And then you can choose what hospitals you want to compare to. In my case, in our case, I compared us to, I chose Holy Cross Hospital, St. Vincent's and Espanola. And it'll also show you the state and national averages. And this allows you to question the structure regarding the services that they provide that, that we can compare to. In this particular slide, I'm looking at patients who gave us a rating of nine and 10 out of a scale of one through 10. And you can see that, you know, the slide from earlier was 69%. For Presbyterian, it was 67%, 50% for St. Vincent's. But it also shows the state and national averages. So we can compare to not only our closest competitors, but also to what the state and national average is doing. This is our willingness to recommend. How many patients who come to Holy Cross Hospital are willing to recommend us to their patients, to other patients, to their families and friends, to other people who are coming to the hospital. Again, this is an upward trend for us. And this shows where we are now where we were a year ago. And compares us to St. Vincent's and Espanola. Again, the same thing. It's just looking at it in different formats. And I'll go through this quickly. The other thing that, besides customer satisfaction, is the core measures. Core measures are, we have a set of disease processes that we have to look at and make sure that we're meeting the standard of care from patients coming to the hospital with those disease processes. So. This is what CMS is looking at when, when we send them data on this and what they base their value-based purchasing scores on. And I'll talk to you about that in just a few minutes. So they're looking at how to treat patients for heart attack, congestive heart failure, pneumonia, the surgical care improvement project. And we do very well on all of our measures. And again, this are just examples of how we report this. This is, again, comparison between Holy Cross Hospital, Presbyterian Hospital and state and national averages. In most cases, we're at 100%, 99%. Anything better than 98% is where we wanted to be. And in most cases, we exceed both the state and national averages. Again, congestive heart failure, you can see we're 100% for the state and national. Are 99% and 98%. Congestive heart failure, we're continuing to do well there. Pneumonia measures, I'm just gonna skip through this. If you have any questions, please stop me. And surgical care improvement, this is important because this is how we look at our surgical side infection rate, how we compare our surgical side infection rate to others in the state. We have a very low surgical side infection rate at Holy Cross Hospital. Are patients given their antibiotics appropriately? Are they, the antibiotics discontinued appropriately? And again, we do very well with that. ED throughput, this is how patients are treated in the emergency department, how soon, how long they're in there, how quickly they're moved through the emergency room. And again, you can see just from the graphs that, that we're able to, to take care of our patients that are coming through the emergency room very quickly. Average time, the patient's in the emergency department by the time they're seen by a healthcare provider, from the time they go in from triage into the actual emergency department itself, is a very short period of time. The one area that we're struggling with is what happens to our patients is admitted to the hospital. That period of time is taking longer. We're hoping now with the changes that we've made with the hospitalist program that we'll be able to see a huge change in that because of how the hospitalists are now seeing patients in the emergency department sooner. Discharging patients quicker rather than waiting to end the day. Discharging patients early in the morning so that we have beds available for those patients who are in the emergency room or need for a hospital bed. And then value-based purchasing. CMS takes our scores from core measures and customer satisfaction. They've come up with a formula and they determine how much money we're gonna get based on this formula. And although, and this has been in place for the last couple of three years, it's been part of the Affordable Care Act. And the first year, they took 1% of our pay in 2013. Took 1% of our pay and we did not quite make, we were only able to get back 88% of that. Last year, they took 1.25. We were able to get back 1.22% of that. And this year, they are giving 1.5%. This fiscal year that we're going into now, so I'll take 1.5%. But we did so well on our customer satisfaction scores that we are now gonna get 2.15% back. So we've done very well. Even with the turmoil that we've been through with the customer satisfaction and you saw those, those numbers drop, we were able to sustain some of our improvements enough that we were able to make this, this increase in pay this year. And then other things, this was just the tip of the iceberg of the data that I collect at Holy Cross Hospital. There is so much. But one of the things that we really are looking at is readmission rates. One of the things that CMS is not gonna be paying for is patients who are coming back within 30 days with the same diagnosis. So we have to put processes in place to make sure that we're treating those patients, that they're getting the instruction that they need, that they're seeing their healthcare, their primary care providers, that they're taking their medications, that we're doing follow-ups with them at home to prevent them from coming back to the hospital unnecessarily. And you can see that we've made huge improvements in that. That orange line shows a downward trend. This next slide shows, talks about some of the things that we've done to, to improve this. The next slide is falls prevention. We knew we had a problem with patients falling. We were having an average of five to six falls a month. That's huge. We didn't want it to be that high. We put a team together and over the last couple of years that we're coming in, we are now down to about two falls a month. There's no way that you can prevent all falls. But you can, you put processes in place that make those falls, the patients are not hurting themselves when they fall. And so again, the next slide just shows.
What sort of a team are we gonna have to do? How did you approach it?
It's a fall prevention team. First of all, we looked at all the data. We were not aware that we had so many falls. We were reporting it in several different places and we did not have a clear definition for what a fall was. So we had to put a team together and we looked at, we came up with some very clear definitions and guidelines for what a fall was and what we needed to do. So we made simple changes, even like changing the bedspread. We found that some of our bedspreads were that silky slippery stuff. Patient would sit on it and slide off the bed and onto the floor. We changed that and we gave them different kinds of slippers that were non-slippers. We gave them, we talked to the family, made sure that the family understood that this patient was at risk for fall and that if they had to leave, that they needed to make sure the nurses were called. We instituted hourly ramming so that the nurse was going into the room more frequently. The nurse and the nurse's aide asking them to get up to the bathroom rather than waiting for the patient to call when it was urgent and needed to go, saying, I'm here now, I have time, I can take you into the bathroom. So that really, those types of things really decreased the number of falls that we had. Last, a couple more is, this is our surgical side infection rate. We have not had a surgical side infection since March of 2013. That's a very good indicator for us. And then the last one is our adverse drug events. And this is fairly, this is something that we've just started collecting in the last, in the last year and putting processes into place so that we don't have adverse drug events. That means patients, the wrong patient getting the wrong medication or the patient getting the wrong dose or getting it at the wrong time. Any questions? It's a lot of information, like I said, it's just the tip of the iceberg of all the stuff that we're doing. But you can see that Holy Cross Hospital really is doing very well in this. We are exceeding a lot of what our neighboring hospitals do. We do very well on customer satisfaction. We do excellent on core measures. And a lot of this other data is reported to the, to the state. There are many, many places. The American Hospital Association, Healthcare Safety Network, lots of different places that we're reporting data to.
Commissaries?
Oh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just thank you for making the presentation. It's good to know that you've got all these metrics you can look at and that you're focusing on the ones that you need to. And obviously, that's a way to always improve. It's also interesting to see the customer satisfactions drop whenever there was layoffs and turmoil and hopefully, administration will be able to maintain a wooly and keel going forward with, hopefully, we're past a lot of the, the most difficult turn points.
I think one of the most important things that we do is to go into the patient's room and talk to the patient and find out from their perspective about anything that's going on at the time and try to fix it for them before they leave. That's real service recovery. And that's something that we're really striving to do on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chase.
Chairman, Linda, thank you, thank you for the report. And Chairman, is this something that, you know, I think it's important that we might hear this maybe quarterly or, you know, we have an opportunity to kind of gauge what is going on? And I think it's a great opportunity for us to interact with, you know, with the hospital.
That is certainly much appreciated, Ms. Chase. And so I know that we had that discussion in the last meeting and the hospital has, has promised to come forward as many times as necessary for the county commission and the public to be able to make us aware, get us aware of the things that are going on at the hospital and the situations that you're encountering on a monthly basis.
I just wanted to add that we have gotten some awards. Just recently, we got a Star Award from the, from the state for our quality programs, our safety, quality programs at the hospital. I think that's really important. And I don't know, Steve, if we answered your question on the services?
You did. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, commissioners? Thank you very much. We'll move on to item eight B. This is the discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the presentation by Kit Cars Electric, who are requesting support from Taos County regarding the tri-state, New Mexico, Golden Settlement information, regarding the broadband project, the home project. Mr. Luis Reyes, good morning and welcome.
Mr. Chairman, member of the commission, staff, thank you for this opportunity, basically to give you an update and probably been making a request at the end of my presentation of the commission. As many of you know, we've been working on two important projects the last few years. Uh, as many of you know, we've been working on two important projects uh, last few years. The first is, what I want to move over is the Tri-State issue. And I know you've had presentations on energy efficiency, how to manage your electric costs, those type of issues that a lot of people struggle with. And you've also had presentations about big power lines wanting to be built in the area and the lack of renewable energy that has been afforded us by a power supplier. In two thousand thirteen, and there's a presentation, generally put that, but never follow it as closely as I probably should. So I'll try to follow it. Back in two thousand, there was a merger with thirteen co-ops in New Mexico with Tri-State. We used to be a number of planes electric, they also thought that we were just not big enough in the state to survive. And with a bigger organization than we would, we went on to RFP, got probably about a dozen requests, proposals in. At the end of date, we merged with uh, with Tri-State out of Denver. And really, the benefits of the merger were to have lower and stable rates, uh, continued regulatory oversight and more access to renewable energy. What we got out of the merger so far is we've had nine, nine rate increases that have passed and two that have been stopped in the fourteen-year period. So basically, there's been three years that there had been no, no increases to our rates. And those rates are just passed on to the members. When we went into the merger, we, we went down to three point six cents, we're now at seven point three cents on the wholesale side. And that doesn't include the two rates that are currently suspended, which would probably add another penny to that amount based on what Tri-State proposed, which is, is over a hundred percent increase in that time period. We still have a cap of five percent on renewable energy. Kit Carson hubbers right under that cap, but any project of any size will put us over that cap. And currently, Tri-State is challenging the state of New Mexico about the oversight, the regulatory oversight in federal courts today. Basically, their defense is after they made the deal and in essence, promised that they would be subject to state regulation, they have filed that this interferes in interstate commerce according to the Constitution of the United States. If in fact, they are successful, there'll be no oversight from Tri-State. They'll be, the oversight will be done by their board, who are selected by the forty-four members in the four different states. Uh, so the issues that I'm bringing to you today may never happen because it's really now a race to see what the federal court decides versus what we can get out of this global settlement. Which, which does impact uh rural areas because electricity is, or energy is something that drives everything. People who presented here before, the cost of serving the hospital, to schools, to the, to the cost of serving this facility, including the desire to have more renewables on the system will be dictated by the outcome of this uh, this hearing. Our current status, currently, uh, two rates have been suspended, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. And wage rates are suspended in the state of New Mexico. These three co-ops have to protest those rates and then they have to be found that there is a cause and they're permanently under review by the PRC. In March, we decided to mediate to see if we can come to a global settlement, just not settle the rate issue, but settle contract issues, renewable issues, other issues that are just as important as electric rates. And so that's why it's called a global settlement. We're trying to see settle any and all issues that any of the twelve-member co-ops in New Mexico have. So what is before us today is we have come to a settlement that still needs to be approved of in New Mexico PRC. The first step of that is to put a temporary rig rider into effect. Because of the two protests, our members have saved about two point four million dollars in, in electric cost. And that's real money because that's, in the other three states, these increases have gone, gone through. So today, the rates in Colorado, Wyoming, Nebraska, the other three are higher than New Mexico because of the protests. And so part of what Tri-State needs to continue discussions is some interim rig relief. Uh, the, it would, it would be implemented on or about October first. That really is gonna be subject to the PRC approval. It would go into effect until either the end of two thousand fifteen or until the parties cannot mediate anymore, in which the rate case would be then put back on the table. That point zero zero two, two cents per kilowatt hour equates to about a dollar ten per residential per month. Uh, so in an annual, if you analyze that, it's about fourteen dollars a month, a year. That goes directly to Tri-State, it's a pass-through. We've avoided, uh, we've saved two point four, the state of New Mexico has saved with the other co-ops, close to twenty-five million. So the seventy million dollars we're getting is really twenty-five percent of what they requested. They actually requested the full rate recovery. And the settlement is statewide, our portion is about ten percent or about seven hundred thousand dollars. What we get for that payment is to renew and restructure the current power supply contract, including opt-out option and obtain authorization to negotiate with other power suppliers. Uh, so the first thing that we will, Kit Carson's position to do is ask for a letter so we don't breach our current contract to start talking to other power suppliers to be able to serve this area. All twelve co-ops are free to do that, I'm not sure how many other co-ops will take advantage of that. Would you think because of the uh, uh, lack of growth in the west part of this, in the western United States, some not still coming out of the two thousand eight recession, there's excess power on the market? A real life example is in May of this year, Tri-State sold power to the City of Gallup for three point six cents, starting, ending at six point eight for a ten-year period. If you recall earlier, we said we're already at seven point three. And so in, in ten years, Gallup's rates were still more cheaper than ours today. And so we think there is a lot of excess power and we think it's our obligation to see if we can find some of that to make the cost of electricity cheaper in the areas we serve.
Yeah, Mr. Reyes, with regards to the Navajo Apache co-op, they, they opted out of this, this contract with Tri-State. How, where did they go? How did they get their power?
Mr. Chairman, they went to P and M for a ten-year agreement and they renewed that. Uh, we, we all have the option to go to P and M.
And has it worked now? Well for P and M with them?
You know, it's hard to get an answer, a straight answer from either party. So that means it's probably, somebody's working, somebody's not working. Uh, I think our process in coming to visit with the elected officials and the county leaders is to start to get some input on that so this is more transparent and we can gauge if this is successful or not. And we do hear from, from several sectors of our community, we want more renewable energy. But you know, what, what does that mean, you know, are we willing to pay for that cost upfront? And I'm knowing that over time, uh, it's gonna get cheaper, but we still have a storage issue. Uh, we've been told that the twenty forty contract is too long. Technology's gonna change that, and some of this we, we have proposed. What length of contract does this, can, can we live with in this community, knowing that uh, the power industry is under attack? You have the EPA trying to shut down coal plants, natural gas plants, we're going to natural gas, which is, just, it's gonna make electricity more expensive. And storage for renewables hasn't arrived. And then renewable prices, we see uh, coming down, but there's no storage. At nighttime, you still need to use the electric grid. And those people who can afford batteries, that's still a price, a very pricey application. So there's a lot, there's a lot, a lot at stake. I think the other thing, and I've heard the commission talk about it, when you go, uh, when you do a lot of behind-the-meter applications without integrating the electric cooperative, you're basically just transferring the cost of the grid to someone else. Because we still have fixed costs of the wires and the transformers and substations. If you go behind the grid without some kind of relationship with the co-op, we still have those fixed costs. We still have the substation. So those people taking, getting off the grid, that, that's fine, that's their prerogative. But we still have to pay our bills in paranoid. So all it really is is an exchange of cost, of who pays it. And because our co-op is a primary residential, you know, with the loss of Chevron, that's about ten percent of our load, that cost would naturally be shifted to probably the bigger entities, Taos County, the school districts, uh, stores, you know, stores can pass that cost on, and then the residential community. About seventy percent of our uh, load is residential. And so there's a lot of things that we have to look at when we're, when we're trying to buy power out of the market.
Ms. Chairman?
I'm not, I'm not clear, uh, are we able to opt out of the contract now and go on to the open market and, and see if there's any cheaper supplies?
So, uh, Ms. Chairman, Commissioner Langenhor, the process is, we, we've already asked for the opt-out letter. Uh, the next step would be for Kit Carson to get a list of power supply, uh, the companies that can deliver to this area. At the same time, we're gonna be, Tri-State wants to be kept whole. I'm trying to determine what that is, but they may ask for a fee tag. Because if you take a load, Kit Carson's probably in the top twenty-five percent as far as a load. Uh, the issue's gonna come, if you lose, if, if you, if you leave, are you gonna leave existing debt, existing expenses with another forty-three members? And so we've retained some consultants to start analyzing all those, all those elements. Uh, so it isn't, it isn't simple, but again, depending on how we restructure our contract. It may be that we're with Tri-State as a non-member, but with a cheaper rate. So kind of the Gallup thing.
That's what Gallup did.
That's what Gallup did. And that's pretty, pretty well publicized because we're sitting here in the middle of a rate increase where the rates are gonna go from seven point three to eight cents. And then in May, they announce that they can sell it at three point, I think it's three point four cents to Gallup.
And that was because of the competition of other bidders to provide electricity?
Uh, that's probably one of the elements. Again, we're not going privy to all the negotiations, so I, I know just what we could have, we collected from City of Gallup under the open meetings, you know, open request stuff.
Public information.
Public information, but other than that, don't, don't know how they got such a good deal, given we're members. You would think that us being members would get the better deal and a non-member would pay, even if it's incrementally higher, they'd still pay higher. Because we're paying for that infrastructure, we're paying for that debt service. Uh, we pay for the operations on a day-to-day basis of Tri-State. What's gonna be key here is that key hold provision, and again, we're unclear. Uh, we know what they defined as, we don't, we don't agree on that. And we think that they can take our power and sell it on the market. And so they may be able to make more if we buy from another power supplier. It may be a combination of a, a partial requirement contract where we phase Tri-State out over time and phase someone in during that same time period, so there's a smooth transition. So there's options that we're reviewing. I guess the, at, at the end of the day, our goal is to have cheaper wholesale electric rates, have a shorter-term contract and have access to more renewable as the community deems it necessary or, or requests. So if you, you know, capture our goal out of this, those would be the three. And I think those do tie into a lot of things we're doing. I mean, we talked to Steve on economic development. You know, when you go out to try to recruit a company, the cost of utilities is, is in the, in, in that equation. What is the cost for us to relocate here to put in essence a data center that would complement our broadband and put people to work and it's a clean industry? Uh, so, so the global settlement for us does have a lot of ramifications that we may not even be thinking of about, but it does drive, uh, the way we do business here is the cost of electricity.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a quick question, please. Based on your earlier statement of those costs being passed on, if, even when that happens, how is the closure of the mine gonna affect that if any, because of the load that's there and possibly the, no use of that load, I guess?
So the, there's already been, the immediate effect is you have three hundred employees not working. So we've already seen the effect of a proportion of those people either have left using less or just starting to get other payments. Uh, the second has occurred as the, the mine itself has ceased operations. And so we've seen that, that load already drop, about three hundred thousand kilowatt hours. And we expect that to be totally phased out by probably mid-next year. Chevron's load is ten percent of Kit Carson's entire way. Even with the reclamation and the information that we're working with their engineers now, the reclamation would only probably twenty to forty percent of that ten percent uh, would be gained back by the reclamation process, which means we still have six percent to, to look at. And for us, Steve, that's one reason the economic development of broadband is so important is because that's about the only way to replace a load that big is to get other load, or other businesses of, of like size. Uh, we think there's a promise in Taos ski valley and the operation, the construction and what they're doing. And we're working real closely with the new owners team to get a more comprehensive utility plan up there, including natural gas. If we get all the permits, and Kit Carson already has the permits to run our facilities, we're working with the Forest Service to add P and M essentially, so we can put one big trench up to the valley. Uh, but that may be able to replace it, but that may take time. Because we think that their benchmarks are gonna be based on basically performance. If there's a lot of ski, a lot of snow skiers, then we make the next investment. If there's not, I still have the issue of how do we overcome that six percent without passing it on to the ratepayers. And so we are looking at all those issues. Uh, they're really, in our, in our service territory, there really isn't any other sizable load that we see on the horizon. Most of the ski areas are left here, are left there. Uh, most of the municipalities are very little construction, counties are very little construction. Uh, you know, we look at building permits, very, very few compared to, let's say, pre-two thousand eight. So this power supply issue, to put things in perspective, if we can save a penny, it saves the ratepayers about three point three million dollars a year. If you, if you save a penny and a half, it just incrementally increases. And you get the same product, it's just an electron that powers anything electric.
Mr. Chief, Mr. Reyes, say you cannot overturn the six or the ten percent for precedent, how much of the rate?
I, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Duane, we're already looking at that, but it really is gonna be a function of the rate design. So what may happen is you have a customer charge component, at fourteen fifty you pay. That may increase when we decrease the kilowatt hours, so it becomes revenue neutral. Your bill would remain the same, but I would be subject to, to the fluctuation of kilowatt hours. In summer, we use less, in winters, we use more. But if we could raise the customer charge where we, we, we cover that every month regardless of what you use. And, and we're used to that already and we do that in our cell phone. And you pay your fixed, whatever the monthly charge is, and most people get free minutes or free texting. So that concept isn't a, a, a new concept. And so we have some, again, we have some consultants looking at what that impact would be based on a six percent because we think the reclamation will cover, you know, twenty to forty percent of what we lost. Uh, don't know at this time because it's, what we have to do is we allocate by class. And so we have residential, small commercial, large commercial, and then industrial. We allocate some of this lost revenue to Chevron back itself. And so this also, the commissioner factors into it. Wouldn't want to put out a percentage of residential rate increase because in fact, getting a different power supplier can lower the rate in that area. And then you assign everything to, to the other classes. Historically, we break even on residential. In fact, during our last, last rate case, we had a negative, I think it's one and a half percent rate return on our residential. Chevron had about a fourteen percent return. So when we make rates, it's really to make the, at least a one or two percent rate return on residential when the industry allows you to eat. So the other classes pick up that, such as this facility, picks up that increase in rates. So it really is going to be a function of rate design, and what the commission approves, and the power supply cost. The other factor is going to be how much renewable we put on the system. And when I say "we," the co-op. If the co-op puts it, and we generally get a better pricing, we can put in areas that we can manage our system better. If it's put without a plan, you can have some system problems. And we did have that up on Commissioner's room where your shop is, where that solar wasn't adjusted properly. So it started to, voltage started to rise, which gave problems to everyone in that area. And so there, it's just not as easy as putting in a rate. There would be costs associated to making sure our system can accommodate, probably at the 20% range, we'd have to make some system changes. The question then, at that time, is who pays for those upgrades? The people putting the arrays, the people, the members of the co-op? And so those are all issues that we're, we're working on now to find a solution. Back on the negotiations, in 90 days or at the end of the year, Tri-State will then offer a, a capital credit payout to New Mexico co-ops. We have not received a capital credit from Tri-State in the 14 years, and currently, there's a balance of $11 million. So we're attempting to see if that's part of this global settlement. And then number three, Tri-State will do an independent cost of service. They do budget-based rates, which means they base their rates on budgets. Utility rates are basically based on historical, and then you put in non-inmeasurables. And, in our opinion, Tri-State overrates because of budget-based. Because if you miss the budget, and generally, you miss it on the, on the low side, you overcollect. And there's no mechanism to get that money back to the co-ops, to get back to its members. So under a true cost of service, which is a utility standard, they've been asked to do it to justify their cost. They just can't say, this is the money our budget says, it's basically, this is the budget our cost of service to serve you is, and then put a rate of return on that, which is a more fair and equitable way of calculating rates.
Let me ask, Mr. Reyes, Tri-State gets their power from Prud?
So Tri-State has, they operate in four states, Nebraska, Wyoming, Colorado, and New Mexico. In this state, they have Prud in Grants, they have a gas plant in Deming Pyramid, and then they have interest at Four Corners. They also have, through the 12 co-ops, interest at Lake Powell, Glen Canyon Dam, some hydro power. They own, and also, they have a coal regenerative unit in Sprengerville, Arizona. And so that's how they serve this region. They have gas plants, they have coal plants and gas plants in Colorado, Wyoming, and no assets in Nebraska.
Who has the ownership of Four Corners? I mean, I've known about San Juan, San Juan.
San Juan, yeah, so you have the two, two areas. PNM is the biggest player, they all have a percentage. At San Juan, I believe, Tri-State owns 8%. And then the other parties, PNM holds the most, and after that, I'm not sure what are the parties that deliver to Four Corners. So what we hope to get out of, out of this global settlement is, one, access to more renewable energy. What that limit is, we're steady. But we think that without system improvements, that number can go to 15 to 20% without system problems or system issues that we can't address with current technology. Second benefit would be getting capital credits, is cash that then we can pay back to our members. And then there's $11 million that we have there, if we can get some of that, that would then be more fair to our members. The current status now is Colorado, Nebraska, Wyoming, they get capital credits every year. And so when they have a rate increase, they get a capital credit check also, so they can mitigate the, the impact of it. We, we, we don't have it. And so to make it more equitable, we're asking for that. Now, if Kit Carson or other members decide not to, not to stay with them, then we may bargain with the capital credit to try to get a loan. Because in the end, I think people want the money in their pocket, more than the promise that they'll pay something in a few years. We're looking for a shorter-term contract, on page 12. And I think the reason for that is, we believe technology is going to change the delivery of your service. 2040, really the only benefit we see there, and it's an important benefit, is it's an all requirement contract. They have an obligation to service. The risk we do take is, if it's a 10-year or 15-year contract, the power, the market power may go up. Or there may be, right now, there's an excess, there may be a shortage of power. So there is an inherent risk in anything that we do, but technology may change enough, or they may shut down enough coal plants that the cost of power is going to rise anyway. And so, again, anything we do is going to be, there is going to be risk associated to it. So what we're trying to do is mitigate the risk, knowing that there is going to be a risk associated to any transaction that we bring to our members. And then, a more favorable contract terms. If we stay with Tri-State, we may get more, better terms, where there's more renewable, where there's an opt-out period that you can every five years exercise. Right now, we're locked into 2040. There's only two of us that have 2040 contracts, Kit Carson, Delta Montrose, the rest of the co-ops have 2050 contracts. And so the other 42, including 11 in this state, their contracts don't expire until 2050. And then we want price certainly. If you looked at the Gallup, if you take the Gallup as the model, every year, it tells you what the price of electricity is going to be. Whether it's 3.4 or 4.5, but at least there's certainty that people can budget and understand and expect. But right now, on budget-based rates, we don't know what the rate increase is going to be until October, for next year. And so there's no certainty in what that, what that impact's going to be to our members until October. And then that goes into effect January 1, so it doesn't give us a lot of time to work with our members of how to handle the impact of any errors. And again, I covered these, two, because of the protests, two current rates are pending. On page 15, we saved, that's 2.1, with August building in, it's 2.4 moving, and about $25 million savings. Those savings will continue without a saving amount. And I think on that, Mr. Chairman, and then at the back, starting on page 20. So we did an analysis based on 2013 data of what two mills to the detention center, which is probably your lightest load is, based on historical, so you can see from January, you use 101,000 kilowatt-hours, that equates to 229 hours. And we're saying that amount of money, even though it's an increase, is worth giving us the opportunity to look for potentially a better power supplier, better terms, a better price, and more access to renewable. And so over the year, if 2014, let's say 2013, the impact to the economy would be $3,000, $3,000 for that facility. We can calculate this for any, any consumer, any load. On, on the next page is the administration. You have two accounts, and so it gives you what the impact of those would be based on historical data. Then on page 22 is the impact to the different classes of customers.
That's it? Chairman, please, these are increases above and beyond what we're paying now?
Yes. So, so, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brody, there haven't been an increase for two years.
Right.
And so part of, to settle, so the option is, we either settle this globally or go to a rate case. Rate case, we feel pretty good that we would probably be successful. And that there will be a minor increase, but there'd be an increase. But it wouldn't settle the contract issue or the renewable issue, we'd just settle the rates, because that's all the commission has jurisdiction over. We've opted to look at it globally, and the cost of negotiations is this amount. Now, there are some triggers to cancel this. If three co-ops feel, starting, let's say, October 1st, that we're not going to see any progress. So the, the buyout number is too high. It gets canceled automatically with three co-ops saying this isn't working, we go back to a rate case. If one, if less than three co-ops challenge it, then the mediator will decide, if Tri-State is bargaining that fate, that that can kill it. If when we request the letter, and Tri-State doesn't deliver the letter to opt-out for other power suppliers, that can terminate the agreement. And if they don't give us the proposal, both on the cost of service and on the capital credits by the end of the year, that cancels it. So, so we actually got a lot of triggers to cancel it where they really had none. The, the other issue that we're concerned about in our article earlier is a federal court issue. Is, since they operate in four states, they're, they, they have to be, they're saying that an individual state cannot regulate them. Because that interferes in interstate commerce pursuant to the Constitution of the United States. Again, we think that's a 50/50. We think we, you know, it's, it's changed, but we, we think we're in a pretty good position. But in fact, if, if the court, and, and there's already been a case docked it. So the court decides in Tri-State's favor, then there's no obligation for them to do anything other than what they want to do, which is historically raise rates. If, if the court goes to the co-op's position, Tri-State is big enough that they'll appeal it. So then you come into what the legal bills you can in, in fighting this. To give you an idea, the last rate case that Kit Carson was in, just a distribution rate case, cost us about $450,000. Okay? If we litigate this, we think it's, and we're, we've already spent about $200,000, we think it'll be another $200,000 to litigate. Because it's not, just not the lawyers, it's all the consultants that you have to hire. And then it's a number of proceedings. So when you, when you look at, how do you spend a member's money? Is it legal fees, or is it maybe getting a better deal for us? So those are all things that we've discussed in, in time-consuming meetings with our board, with other co-ops. And this is what we decided is the best avenue to pursue. So Commissioner, there would be an increase of that .002, which is about 1%, 1% increase. And we've broken it down by, by, by classes. So that if you're a small commercial, you know what the impact on average would be, if you're a large commercial, you know what the impact would be.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Reyes, if, if they win in federal court, how does that affect the opt-out possibilities?
We believe that they win in federal court, they'll, they'll keep us captive.
We're stuck till 2040.
We're stuck. Currently, for Kit Carson, Delta Montrose, there's another little nuance where, because we have a shorter-term contract, they've, they've accelerated our payments on loans. So they're basically saying our rate should be higher, because they have a shorter time to, to collect the money. Now, these loans aren't directly tied to our system, because when, when, when there was a pinch Tri-State merger, the system, the service house is already pretty robust. And they probably put in $6 to $10 million over 14 years into our grid, but they probably, you know, borrowed, you know, $500 or $600 million. So a very small percentage. But under an opt-out, that will probably go away. So there's some other issues that tie to higher rates that may potentially go away because of some of the, other things that we're dealt, we're dealing with. I, I think, the other thing that's going to come to light at some point is that power line. The power line that they want to build from here up to San Luis, the 230 KP that goes right through the monument. Right now, I think Kit Carson has been one of the reasons they have not built it. Because we've opposed that until we get enough information.
And on that, the justification for, for building it is increased use in Southern Colorado, but there is diminished use in Southern Colorado, as it turns out.
And, and it's diminished too. I mean, if we could, Commissioner Blenner, if we could justify that Chevron doubled and Taos County Valley tripled, and we need more power line. The reality is, year-to-date, so far this year, we've had a 7% decrease in sales. And we had a 7% decrease in sales last year, notwithstanding Chevron. You know, technology is, is making people more energy conservations, light bulbs. You know, you've gone from laptops, from desktops to laptops to iPads. More, more competing power, less energy. You've gone from incandescent to now LEDs, more light, less energy. And so that naturally is going to push down people's average bills. But it is a takeaway from the system we built, to take care of the old type of devices. Because you build an electric grid to last 40 or 50 years. So, so this really is key on how we, to Commissioner Duane's question of how we price power in this area. So with that.
Mr. Reyes, based on that, then, is there any possibility under that economic development for electric grid? For the electric grid, do you bring that down to expand maybe into subsequent communities next to us, or is that a possibility? Enchanted circle, you know, above?
So, so, this, this made me dovetail Stephen to my next discussion, but the potential of broadband, and since the co-op owns a broadband, may help offset that 6%. Exponentially, broadband is probably the fastest-growing utility worldwide, just not in the United States. But most devices, not all devices that we communicate with, need some kind of data bank. You know, as we talked, the E911 center here is geared up to be NG911, which is new generation, which means it's going to be IP-based. It's going to be broadband-based. And if you don't have those facilities, you may have all the tools and gadgets here that look cool, and they make a demonstration, but if you don't have the bandwidth, you can never use those. It's going to happen in cell phones, and then going out to TP, you can't use it. So what if you have a smartphone, if you don't have enough towers, you can't use it. So, part of our plan is if we can lower our cost of power, expand our renewable, educate people on energy conservation, went to conservative, off-peak times, and then complement it with a robust fiber network that can attract or expand existing businesses, then I think everyone wins. So that is part of this, this, this equation, and I don't think we tapped really what the broadband can do for us, totally. But before I go into that, is there any, Mr. Chairman, any questions on the power supply? I, I think on that, one of the asks we do want is, we do need support from the community to move forward, because these are things that are coming from the community. And I think the first support is really calling our PRC commission to support this. Like I said earlier, if, if they don't, if they'll go to a rate case, you might feel very confident that Kit Carson and the other co-ops will have lower rates, or have the same rates, not a big increase, but for how long? And, and without the opportunity to expand. Currently, again, all 12 co-ops and Tri-State have agreed to this. Chevron has taken a no position, which legally is, is okay, they're not going to get in our way. Oxydental and Kinder Morgan are opposing. And so they, in essence, as of Friday, want to save it. Apparently, their co-ops have no desire to, to find a cheaper power supply, so their position is, let's get to saving till we can. Our position is, they're members of a co-op, and they should be working through a co-op, through their board, and through their community. But they've opted not to. So I think what a request is, is at minimum, individuals of the commission, the staff, can write email, call the commissioners to support this. We expect the hearing to be September 10th or September 17th. Part of our goal here is to periodically let the county know we're having these negotiations that are successful, and continue to solicit input. I mean, it seems like everyone knows someone who works for the power company. And we'll listen to that. And we'll listen to that input so we can formulate a good energy strategy for this community. And so, that would be one, you know, more stronger would be a resolution from the, from governing bodies supporting this for all the reasons that we've outlined. So, we'd like to respectfully request that you at least take that into consideration. Briefly on the broadband, because I think at the end of the day, the broadband is going to be bigger actually than the electric revenues. And we're currently 82% done on our aerial, 93% done on our underground. We spent $42 million of the 64, so we lack 20, 21. We built 70% of the system and expanded 66% of the funds. So, we're right now right, right on budget. We're starting to do the service drops to individual homes. We actually have lit up two substations in the north. So, we have currently Madiya, Costilla, and North of Sunshine all lit up. And we do have several accounts here in Taos. But to give you an idea, and again, I'm not sure how excited the different people are, but I think this facility here, I think when we checked with your IT guy, it was at 14, 14 up, 14 down megabits. In Costilla, and, and you're pretty close to the central office. Here, you're about a mile away from the central office. In Costilla, which is about 60 miles, the farthest, Madiya, the farthest point from our system is where we started. So, the rural areas weren't forgotten. We're offering 20, 20 up and 20 down for probably a fraction of what the county's paying. And the, so capabilities of the network are really just subject to what speeds people want and what speeds people can afford. And I think part of that was to articulate that the speeds that they were getting before in Madiya were basically through a dish, just through a wireless dish, probably about a megabit. You know, phones are faster than them today. But if we can do that there, then Taos and Angel Fire and Questa and everywhere are going to be pretty easy for us to maintain high speeds. Our goal is to have most of our system done by the end of this year. We're about 7%, so we probably will be about 90% by the end of the year. And as we finish areas, we're starting to light them up. So, our goal also is to start connecting services to our network. And you may or may not know that this network is also tied, Kit Carson owns fiber to Santa Fe through Reddinet. So, we go right through Espinola. We own and operate that system and that fiber. So, we have a contract with Reddinet to do their operations. And so, we're tying a link for redundancy. Right now, the big issue, and we've all felt it, is when a line, fiber gets cut, generally the U Park area, we use cell towers, we use a lot of devices that require bandwidth, or broadband. By building an alternate site through Espinola into Santa Fe and into El Grande off the incumbent supplier will be totally separate from their network. So, that should have a reliability of all aspects of people's uses of broadband. And so, we're currently talking to different businesses in the community, hotels, and getting very good responses. Our build right now, I think as, as we hear, we're working with the state of New Mexico to take some fiber to, to, to bridge. We think outside of expanding just to phones and now they have the capability to put in some high resolution video out there. So, it's just not a matter of phone, but video that could probably be directed straight into 911 to capture any type of events out there. So, the capabilities are there. Network's up and running in certain areas, Mr. Chairman. And just wanted to report that since I had the opportunity on the power supply.
So, what is the, the basic cost for residential broadband?
10, 10 and 10 is like $49, $99. One of the things I think we have is 50 bucks. Take into account is, when people ask us that, Taosnet can probably offer that, but CenturyLink can't. So, when people say it's higher, yeah, maybe higher than CenturyLink, but CenturyLink can offer 10 and 10. I mean, right there, you know, I have both services just to see how they both work. I, I get, I get three, three in one from CenturyLink and I get 20 and 10 from my wireless. So, I think when you look at what you get, it's, it's just much faster. And it really, the value then is depending on what you're using. If you're using it for home business, the $49.99 is a bargain. If you're using it to serve, it really is at that point what an individual feels any broadband for. And, and there's a whole lot of applications for that, that we're using today, but not equate to it. I mean, if you, if you pump gas and put the credit card into a machine, that's a broadband connection. If you take money out of an ATM, that's a broadband connection. If you use Netflix, that's, that's a broadband connection. So, it really depends on what, on the priciness. If you have, you know, a couple iPad and people watching Netflix at the house, you probably pay the 50 bucks at least in the family. And so, so those are, but they're, they're designed to be competitive. I think the difference with our project than any other project in the United States is we're going to every home and business. When you hear about these Google, Austin and Utah, they're going to affluent neighborhoods and to the business districts. We're, we're going to, we're going to affordable housing, low, low income. We're going to, you know, we have Questa schools. So, we're serving Costilla Elementary. I mean, so ours really is a more universal approach to offering broadband than a selected few approach in offering the service.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just for the sake of the commission, I just want the audience and the commission to know that Mr. Reyes has been working with us at the Amargus Senior Citizens Center and also at the Old Courthouse, as was mentioned earlier. And so, we really appreciate the assistance that you've been able to do and to bring broadband into those areas first.
You're welcome, Stephen. I think on, you know, on the courthouse, there is a broadband connection that is very fast. And maybe in your considerations to the town and the county on the uses, one is, and he that uses, utilize broadband. I mean, it is, if you remember, we had Bills put the pictures on our big screen out there. And we're looking at, I think, sunsets. We have some cameras out there in Yanom. That was real-time. And so, with that connection, we were looking at, during the fiasse's real-time, how the sunset was in the Lancha area. So, so again, there's a lot of tools. We're, we're taking it everywhere. I guess my sales pitches, I encouraged Tuscan just to buy it because on the, on the big picture, if the, if we buy that service, it helps offset electric rates. And it's a win-win. So, you get a good service that you can't find anywhere in the state. Plus, it's part of the equation in keeping electric grid stable in the area.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate the presentation. And I, I guess, as you said earlier, you would prefer a resolution from this commission. And so, Mr. Archuleta, as you, having put anything in this point.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we have it, but we will have it in front of the commission at the next commission meeting.
And that will be, when is that next meeting?
The 19th, I believe.
Were you hoping to get, get that resolution before the 9th of this month?
Mr. Chairman, right now, it looks like the 10th or 17th would be the two days that the PRC will hear that. And so, a resolution, maybe a letter, something that at least articulates our desire to move forward with this proposition.
Mr. Malone, is it possible?
Mr. Chairman, we have discussion, consideration, decision regarding the presentation. I think it would be appropriate for the commission, if it chose to vote, to direct staff to prepare a resolution for the chairman's signature, so that it can be timely. Just ask Luis, is this a resolution in support of the global settlement approach? Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Malone, yes, please, Mr. Malone. Okay. Mr. Blankenhardt.
Well, with that being said, I'll, I'll make a motion to direct staff to draft a resolution for this board of commissioners to support the global settlement.
I'll go ahead and second it. Any other discussion, Commissioners?
Commissioner, are you proposing to come to the town also with the same objective to get a resolution? Or is, you know, I, you know, when the two governing bodies come together on a resolution, I think it might have more impact. But individual, individuals is great too, so.
That, that was, that, that's our goal. It's just getting on everyone's schedule. I think we're on the agenda for the 9th, next, next Tuesday for, go to town of Taos and for Angel Fire. And so, our goal again is to get as many of the elected officials to buy and give them the short timeframe on this. So, we're on the agenda, I believe, next Tuesday.
Thank you, Chairman.
I was wondering, Mr. Malone, maybe we could also put together another joint resolution between the town and the county. Would you like that?
I think so.
Is, is that possible, Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, both of what we discussed as just our resolution, a joint resolution is possible, but we need a vote on both of those.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and take a vote on the, on the first item.
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sánchez. Commissioner Doudon.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Chairman or middle?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that joint resolution, Mr. Malone, can you talk a little bit about it?
Well, again, Mr. Chairman, if this commission were to give, take a vote and direct staff to prepare a resolution or engage in a joint resolution with the town for signature in by the chairman so that we don't have to go back and re-sign by everybody. Actually, let me, let me modify that. I would rather see all the commissioners sign who have voted today.
Okay. I'll, I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Doudon.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Chairman or middle?
Yes. Does that, you know, Commissioner Sánchez has to leave. He will not be able to.
He should be shown as abstained or not.
I see. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Chairman, we'll, we'll make that a point too. And we'll work through Steve to periodically update this commission on how we're doing.
Okay.
I still have a couple of quick questions. I always say that quick, but not always. Well, first off, thanks for the efforts fully behind your notions, of course, of maintaining the rates as, as low as we can get them and having more freedom in the contract, including the increased alternative sources and opting out. I think they're all really worthy goals and I, and I think the global settlement is a good one. And we'll keep our fingers crossed and look forward to your next update. On the broadband, are you in negotiations with the other providers? I know that there's, there's always been talk about pricing. You, you can get it from Kit Carson. So, you know, the information that I got from Kit Carson is that I can go from 2 megabits to 10 for about the same price as I'm paying now, which, you know, I'm, I'm ready to sign up for. But I, I know that you had always said that you could still contract with the Taosnet, the other.
Yes.
The other providers. And I wondered, how, have you set your pricing with those other businesses?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blankenhardt, we basically have all the contract issues except for the pricing settled. And part of that is the way with, with the final cost is going to be. So, we can assign the cost either per subscriber or based on load levels, like how much media that are used. You know, we're negotiating with three different providers. Currently have NDAs with them. So, can't go into a lot of detail on that. We still have that obligation and that desire to help other local companies access the network while we get these contract issues resolved.
Great. And how many megabits you get at the courthouse, just curious?
I think it's 14, what we saw here is 14, 14, you know, 14 and 14, which is, in, in my opinion, for everything that you do, very low. I mean, you know, we just set up randals down the road and I think there are 15 and 15. So, I figure, how does a lumber company need more than a, a county that has, you know, records that you could put electronically, 911? So, one of the things we're trying to do, Commissioner Blankenhardt, is sit down with different businesses to assess really what do they need? And not, you know, pay for any more that you need, but you tell us what your applications are and we have a scale that you should use. And then you make that decision.
How about the Old Courthouse, what's that?
The Old Courthouse, last year, we were running 40, 40 up and 40 down as a beta. So, I think, I think the beauty of this is we can, we can, it's, it's a true fiber network. There's no conflict between, you know, there's not a lot of choke holes, choke points. And we can kind of ratchet it up or down from our old call center. That's where they headed. And it's really just changing dials and speeding it up or speeding it down. So.
That's good. Last, last one. Are we in negotiations with staff on, on the current contract with the Old?
Yes, yes.
Because I know that that was, there was some discrepancy there. I think Commissioner Vermaelen understands it better than I do, but we have an opportunity to save on our bills here, I guess. If that's happening. Well, thank you very much for your time today.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Luis, thank you for continuing to, you know, look for better pricing for the community as a whole, you know, you know, you know, business owners, you know, that, you know, we're looking at bottom dollar, do we hire new employees? Do we spend more on electricity? You know, what, what is it going to look long-range? You know, as planning and businesses around the community, you know. Again, thank you for, for doing it. Hopefully, we can come to some kind of agreement so, so we can move forward in long-range, know where we're going to be within our own budgets. So, this will, we do budget more or we're not budgeting more. So, thank you.
You're welcome very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the next item in our agenda. This is item nine, contracts, agreements. And we use our fees and bids on A, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the CDVG number 14, CNR 101, GO3 exhibit 2A1, certifying official designation. Ms. Anita Padilla, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. You have before you a document that gives Brent Padomeo designation of certifying official for my environmental review process for the CDVG award that we received this year.
Why not our, our county manager?
I, I approached Brent about this because I know our county manager is so busy. And there's going to be a number of documents that I'll have to sit down and discuss with Brent, as well as I've already sent out 42 letters that we have to review. So, I just, I mean, it wasn't because I don't want Mr. Archuleta to do it, but I know how busy he is. And Brent and I had already had the discussion.
Okay. Very good. Commissioners?
I have a question. This is for just what, signing of that?
No, what happens is, is you have to do an environmental process for, for any funds, state funds, federal funds. So, the road that, the project that we're going to be doing, you have to designate a category for it. We're designated that it's excluded from the environmental process because we're not changing the footprint of the road. We're not going to widen it. We're not going to do anything else to it. But there's a number of documents that goes along with that.
So, to approve. Okay. I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Blankenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Doudon.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Chairman or middle?
Yes. Item B, this is discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the following recommendation to award IFB 2015 dash 01, road construction materials and services to Northern New Mexico, Northern Mountain. Constructors, an approval for contract in the amount of $33,900, inclusive of TRT. Ms. Elsa, good morning.
Morning. Morning, Chairman, permission. Today, I'm presenting to you for award, there's actually going to be two contracts, it's a multi-work, which is also number B. For invitation to bid that was put out in August 15, 2014, for road construction materials and services. And those services encompass speed humps, obviously, within the county when requested, as well as bases for light poles in which we are responsible for as a county to keep. And those services encompass speed humps, obviously within the county when requested, as well as bases for light poles in which we are responsible for as a county to keep up and going and ready. In particular, for this particular contract and award, there were two packets received, one from Northern Mountain Constructors and the other one from Medina and Sons. And I have right now, I'm sorry, they put it in the packet, I have right now bring down some bid tabulations. Northern Mountain Constructors actually has a resident contractor's certificate from taxation and revenue. And based on that, with the bid tabulation, in order for us to see who is actually the cheaper price, the bid tabulation was done. And under certain different materials, because there were about 10 or 12 materials listed out within the bid tabulation, certain materials were awarded to Northern Mountain Constructors and the other materials were awarded to Medina's. The ones that were awarded to Northern Mountain are pretty much all the hot mix, the cold mix, and services for the speed humps at this time for this particular contract and award.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
As well as the sand, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Why is it that the contracts for next year's, I think it's 214, 215, were put on this?
Which contracts?
Oh, like Santa Barbara.
Oh, those ones in particular. Right now, I'm getting more clarification, assisting our county manager, Steve Archuleta and Earl Elsar, in getting clarification as to, for the 1415, for the LGRF funds. From what I found out this morning, I talked to Ms. Susan Medina at District Five, and she informed me that we received the award letters with the amounts that were going to be awarded for the school cap and school bus route. And it's my understanding that at this point in time, our, the predecessor, public works director did not submit in resolutions necessary to get those agreements drafted. So those will be presented at the next meeting here. I already emailed Earl to get together with me and with Steve so we can get those resolutions presented to you and approved to get those agreements drafted up for FY 1415, which includes Santa Barbara Road.
But do you think we'll be able to do them this year?
Within this fiscal year, yes. Those agreements will be given to us, to be honest with you. I don't know, depending on the timeframe and of course, weather permits, if we're going to get it done, particularly this one, because I don't know how soon those agreements are going to get before us, so we can present to you, to get approved, to give back to the state. So they might not happen until spring, just to be honest with you. I wasn't aware, I had to call this morning to find out where we were at with the paperwork, and that was information that was given to me this morning from District Five.
So in other words, when they're telling me the agreements have to come back to us?
Yes.
And then back to the.
Yes. Leandro has more clarification on that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Doudon, because of that, we may not get it done till spring, but then we're also having, it's so early with this information, we're going to sit down and see if there's a way we can shift some of the general fund money to maybe that project, get it done. But it's just that there was so much up in the air that wasn't cleared, and now that we're verifying what the money's there, they are going to work with us at the state, so that's the good news, is they're working with us to try and maybe consolidate, get one of the roads done this year, and then prioritize the next one.
So how many roads does this affect? How many projects?
This will affect three projects. The three projects for the FY 1415 is Camino de Medio, Santa Barbara Road, and I can't remember the third one. All of Parton List Rogers as well, still.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I thought List Rogers was already on the LGRF.
It is, it's on 1314, and there's also a portion that was listed for 1415 as well on the LGRF.
So it's not going to affect the portion that we're looking at from List Rogers?
No, it does not.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I'm real disappointed in some people that have been or still here. You know, I'm just going to clarify this, that in our country, many just don't get rid of people. Yeah, because that's really pisses me off, you know? All this, I had set it up to be done this year, and if it don't get done, it really disappoints me.
Understood, Commissioner Doudon, Commissioner Blankenhart?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, we're just, we know that we're going to get funding.
Yes, we are aware of that.
Yeah. Borrowing from the general fund, those monies that have already been allocated, and with the reserves that we have, I'm wondering why, if it's just a matter of a delayed payment, we still can't complete the projects?
Oh, we can. In the past, when I was at the wood department, backwards, forwards, you know, construction is kind of like fixing a car until you get in there, you know? They will work with us with that, just like Leandro said, there's a way of borrowing the money, getting the project done in a timely manner. Obviously, we are going to get those monies, and when we get the agreements hanging in place, then we can actually request for the reimbursement at that point in time.
Have we contracted or gone out for bid for the actual placement of the asphalt? My understanding is this is just purchase of the supplies?
This one in particular is just purchase of the supplies. For the LGRF, they will be different contracts, separate contracts, for those particular roads. Right now, currently, we got some quotes in basis of a contract from Northern Mountain Constructors. That's where we were able to figure out what was going on. Leandro and, of course, Steve asked me to look a little further in terms of, you know, where all the monies are coming from. We were a little confused on some of the letters that were sent to the state. And this morning, again, I gave a call, and she gave more clarification as to where the county stands with the 1415. 1314 is already in place, but when I talked to Leandro this morning, telling him, you know, we have a short window of time, you know, Santa Barbara needs to get done, it's getting cold. That's when he came up going, well, you know, we can do a temporary loan and get the road done, you know? And then, of course, the monies will get reimbursed back, because we were given letters guaranteed that we're going to get those, we just have to get the agreements in place.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think I just want to clarify that the issue that we came up with last weekend that we're looking at is that we can't give that temporary loan, we do have the funds available. My concern is, is that those roads be identified and the proper paperwork be put in, because otherwise, we're not going to get the reimbursement back. And so I don't want to be sitting here three months from now saying, okay, we did it, but because that road wasn't identified, the state's not going to reimburse us. And so that's why it's important for us to have the resolution in place, for us to bring those forward in front of the commission and have those and then send them off to the state. I have not talked to Susan, is it this morning, I believe it was this morning, that she actually replied. And so staff will be doing a conference call with her, she'll be after the meeting to discuss the process, how soon we need it. At that point, we can make a determination, we could have an emergency meeting, have that meeting done, have those resolutions in, and then, and then, yes, we could go that route. But I just want to make sure that we're not sitting here three to six months down the line, basically not giving reimbursement to the state because the road hadn't been identified. We are also pulling the notes from the commission meetings, because Mr. Chavez should have actually changed those as they change. As you're aware, Aragüero Road was a road that we were going to be doing under this fund. Because we got CDVG, that had to also change, but unfortunately, the paperwork didn't follow through the state. And so that's why we're backtracking to figure out what paperwork was intended, what's not, what was it. How about those smaller projects that don't involve local government funding, such as the Short Strip in Guyana? That's not affected by any of this, because that's not, didn't need to be identified under local government funding. That was just out of our operational, $2 million a year operational budget. That's correct, and so those funds, we're working with the O.P.R. to make sure those are available. We're also sending up Mr. Perovich to make sure that that gets done in, I don't want to say this year, but the LGRF is the one that's the big one that we need to make sure that it works in place. When do we anticipate a contract for actually placing the material on any of these? Actually, we're going to go through a CES vendor for Guyana, so once we have the hot mix, which was you guys have in front of you today, cold mix, or any of the pit run, or anything else that we need, we'll take that out of this contract, get, prepare the road, get it ready, and then the hot mix will be laid shortly after that. Those contracts will be put in place, hopefully with Mr. Perovich, because he's the CES vendor, you know, our September time window.
And Steve, where is the Rancho's Elementary entrance road?
I believe Rancho's Elementary is 15, 16 this year, but we'll get clarification on that.
I thought there were like three or four roads, including.
There's three roads that we're looking at, Santa Barbara, Noson Rogers, and Guyana Canyon are the three roads that we're looking at for this, this year before December.
Can you look at that and confirm, because I understood it differently from Mr. Chavez's view. Well, I certainly understand Commissioner Doudon's reason to be upset with all of this and structure that. Certainly, I think we need to figure out a way to do it, if we have to pay for it internally and then get reimbursed later on. I would imagine that these roads are, they're already deteriorated. But we're expecting, hopefully, a good winter, and they will deteriorate even more, and it will be a lot more costly if we have to wait on these roads until next year. So, Mr. Archuleta, I would recommend expediting the process and getting approval wherever you have to, to be able to get those roads done before winter this year. And I'm sure the rest of the commission feels the same. Commissioner Doudon, I mean, I brought.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And, Mr. Corla, I was just curious, the way I understand on that monies that was allocated for Camino de Medio Engineering, I understood that bonds hadn't sold, and that's the reason that we don't have the money. So we're kind of lumping these in, all into the same category, or is that a little different?
I mean, it was different, there was, at one time, we had tied LG, the co-op, and that money to Camino de Medio as well, as the appropriation hasn't been sold bond. So there was another source of money that was also going to be combined with that appropriation for Camino de Medio. They've since changed that, and it just hasn't been followed through on.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Brody, the Camino de Medio project is the legislative funding that was given to us. So this is, that's totally different in the appropriation. So that, those bonds will be sold now in January for the planned and designed portion of Camino de Medio. But that comes through the capital outlet project, which is something totally different. We have the option of selling those. Anita, I don't know if she's here or not, could tell us the specifics dates, but the second sell of the bonds will be now in January. And we've already did the applications to make sure that those bonds will be sold in January for that purpose of plan and design of Camino de Medio.
And the reason I bring this up is because, you know, in a joint meeting, we agreed that we would combine the two funds that we both got and go out and get a engineering study for the whole stretch of road versus a portion of the stretch of road, and then possibly both allocate our CDVG possibilities on both ends to then do this road. And so this is going to, by this not happening, it's going to set this back a whole other year, because CDVG, by the time you go out, get the bid process done, actually do a joint venture to get the work done, and then now apply for CDVG, CDVG timeframe won't, I don't believe, going to allow us to do that. So we're going to end up, somebody's going to sit on their funds, I know there's deadlines, and then the joint venture will then proceed.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Brody, I disagree on some part. If we sell those bonds in January, we can have the engineering and design available for us to go out for CDVG, if that's the wish of the commission and the council in the future. That CDVG application, if I remember correctly, has to be in in March, and then the awards come out in late June. And so we can continue to move forward, actually, you know, the town's already sold their bonds, we can actually start the process of that. And then in January, when the county sells their portion of it, then at that point, we can continue the engineering and design of it, and then we could put in a joint application at that point as a county and a town, March timeframe, in order to have an award in May or June for CDVG. So it should delay it. I don't know if the town has moved forward in that at this point, but we should be able to still hit the CDVG back case. The thing that we need to consider, just like this year with the town, the town had not completed their CDVG project, and for that reason, wasn't able to move forward with the CDVG project for this year. We're on the same boat. We have a CDVG project right now, which is a little road. And our, you know, our discussions and our consideration is to move forward and get that done this calendar year, so that we can position ourselves for a CDVG project for the following year. So, I mean, it all has to, has to come into play. We have three years to spend that money, but if we sit on our hands for three years and then spend it at the end, we're not eligible for other CDVG. And so that's part of the equation that we talked about, when we looked at selling bonds, not selling bonds, how soon. Some of it doesn't depend on us, some of it depends on Mr. Perovich, and as we've been talking to him, September is our window for the completion of a little road. That road is ready, we have it ready, the guys have been out there grubbing and making sure that it stays ready. But if I can't get Joey and his equipment there, then on some level, we're not going to get it done this year, and then I can't apply for CDVG next year. So that, so that's the issue. I mean, those are, those are the tight threads.
Yeah, it's been 40 years now.
Yeah, the awards come out when they come, and we're trying to get the project done, but if for some reason Joey can't make it, and he's not out there this year, and it gets too cold on us, and we can't lay that pavement down, selling bonds isn't going to matter to us, because we still can't apply for CDVG the following year, because we have an open project.
Yeah, but we can at least get the.
Signing and designing, yes.
The plan signed for the whole road, not just a portion of the road. It'd be cheaper to do it.
Absolutely.
So when we put out these bids, why don't we actually ask or give deadlines to the contractors? We can't do that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the contractors are private contractors. I, my understanding from Mr. Perovich at this time is that he has a big contract that he's committed to in Raton, and he's only got one set of equipment. So, I mean, he's going to go at, you know, a $2.2 million airport expansion compared to our $500,000 road. He's probably going to go for the 2.2. I can't dictate to him when, when he does that. We can put it off for RFP, we can use a CES vendor.
Are there others that are smaller that could respond to the bid? I don't know if they have their industry contract.
Right. And again, we have to understand that if we're going to go through an RFP process for that, then we're talking two, three months timeframe, because we have to advertise, we have to, you know, and that's why we try to use CE vendors. The problem with the county is that we get notice from the state, and they say, okay, here's your CDVG. We don't get that till June timeframe. At that point, we have to go back, put in a budget, send that to DFA, they sit on it. Once DFA gets it back to us, we're already talking July, August timeframe, now we're trying to put a contract in place. Within that timeframe, Mr. Perovich is already talking to other businesses, he's already talking to other people that want roads, whatever he wants. So he's making decisions on his side of the house, while he's waiting for us to get our approvals from DFA and everybody else. So it gets pretty complicated, and it's a short timeframe of what we have to do. If these were awarded back in March, April, that would be wonderful, because the reality of that is that we didn't have the timeframe to react. And our window to lay down pavement is so low. He starts his plan in May, June, and shuts down his plan in September. And, you know, he doesn't only take care of Taus County, it's Colfax and Españo and every place else that he has. So we just try to get in line and put in as close as we can.
Basically.
Commissioners, the bottom line is that we should have had this, we're having this discussion today, we should have had it back in April. And the bottom line is that Mr. Chavez was not doing his job. That's the bottom line.
Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody else to blame?
Well, next year, we'll get the LGF identified much sooner and won't get caught with at least those funds. And it's good to know from Mr. Archuleta that there's still at least a possibility, assuming that the town is on top of their last year's CDVG and all their other paperwork, that we actually could possibly get both CDVGs from Medio next year and have that engineering in place. It would really be a great thing not to keep losing those half a million dollars a year by not having it all together. So I know it's tough, and I know it's going to be a tight road to navigate, but I'm still holding out hope that we'll be able to do that. How about Cutler? I've heard, isn't that a?
Oh, Cutler, no, no, Cutler.
They're the ones that, are they CES? Can we see if they're available to lay down? They did the state project, and I know I was talking.
They did the state project and I know I was talking to Leroy Vargas when he was with the town back when the town used to pave, when that went. They did all of that through Cutler and it, I don't know. If, if, I love doing business with Joey too, of course. But if, if he's in a bind and isn't able to put asphalt down for us this month, gotta look at all the possibilities.
I agree.
Yeah, the only other one that might perhaps stay contract is Leader, San Fe.
So, Cutler does not have.
Cutler, Cutler has a different way of doing hot mix stuff.
Yeah.
And I don't think they would be able to do it like the way they did over here. Yeah, see, it's completely different machinery that they.
What, and what is the difference? What's?
See, because they pulverize it with that machine and to do those county roads that we have.
I asked, I asked Mr. Vargas, he said that they were able to get into small places too, so, but anyway, it's just.
Cutler right now has got like two.
Too much.
A month and a half in Las Vegas and then they gotta come back in sixty-four. Because they're all in hot mix side of San Fe in Las Vegas.
Okay.
Moving forward with the bid tabulations, Northern Mountain Constructors actually had a resident contractor certificate. So, if you look at the tabulations under the yellow column, that actually indicates the five percent minus the price that Mr. Perovich turned in. The one under the red column is what Medina and Sons bitted on. They bitted on, on concrete, cement, some base course, sand, pressure finds, natural finds. The price that, under the bid tabulation for the sub-toll for Northern Mountain Constructors is strictly for the bid only. So, the prices that were actually bitted under the green column would be the prices that stand what we paid per ton or per cubic yard for those items. And I highlighted on the side, under the vendor's side, in green is Northern Mountain Constructors and red is Medina and Sons. So, those are the two particular contracts that are up to date for your approval.
Let me ask you, Commissioner. On the base course, I see Northern Mountain bitted just Medina and he placed it and we picked it up seven seventy-five. If the county picks it up, Mr. Archuleta, are we gonna charge for fuel and for our personnel and our trucks out of fifty-six thousand and a half reach commission there or fifty-eight? I can't remember. Will we be doing that? Because if not, I can hear you figure how much they can haul, start hauling tomorrow?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I don't know the exact answer. I would say not. We do not calculate that into the, I believe this is a hundred or a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We actually just, that is actually raw material that we're calculating. And so, that would still come out of the budget.
See, because I'm asking this question because if they were to deliver at twelve dollars and we pick it up, it's like seven fifty, so I can do the price as much. You know what I mean? But if we're gonna pay our own sales, you know, like take out fuel or whatever, then we won't be doing that?
No, sir, that, that'll come out of the road department's general fund that's allocated to them every year. So, what you see at the seven seventy-five per ton is what we'll actually just be paying Medina's. The split from the commission will not equate into that seventy-five and how much you can actually haul to your area. Now, if for some reason the truck goes down and we have to have that delivered and that's why it was important for us to make sure that we had it up in Quespa and Pinyosco and those areas, then the price will be a little higher, but we won't be using our vehicles for that and we'll have to pay that twelve dollar price.
See, because what I'm figuring right now is that if we do it three months, we do nine months. I gotta hear black and white. I've done this all my life.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I just, I just wanted to remind the commission, this actual tabulation that is here is not only for base course. I mean, there's times that we need cement, there's times that we need hot mix, there's times that we need asphalt, all of those things. So, all of those sort of fall into the tabulation. I believe we also put in speed bumps and other things into, into it so that we could have a complete tabulation. So, I mean, if we just throw in all that base course, then that's what we get.
No, 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 see, but what I'm figuring out, see, is that my two thirteen, two fourteen, yeah, correct, was the fifty-six thousand and was gonna go base course beyond, so why? So, you know, at this price, then I can do like nine months up there instead of doing three. So, that's what we get.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Duran, I agree with you. My only side note to that is if you want hot mix, cold mix, any of those things later on, and we spent all your fifty-six on base course, then you're gonna get all the base course.
No, no, but this is on the school bus, that co-op, this is completely different.
Commissioner Duran, no, those would be different because for the LGRF, it'd be a separate contract. This is strictly for maintenance of roadways. I know you're looking at the improvement and putting gravel and doing smart stuff. This is, this is separate. You gotta separate the appropriation from the general fund.
Yeah, but we approved this over here, this base course that Northern Mountain bitted on and Medina did. So, then the county can fix it up for seven seventy-five.
Yes.
For that contract.
Yes.
That's another one.
Yes.
But Commissioner, the money for the, this particular came out of the line item of maintenance of roads and grounds. There was a hundred and thirteen thousand in that line item of the public works budget and we're.
So, what about the camp co-op and that? That's gonna have to go out for a bit again or what?
Or we use the state price agreement on those particular, for the actual laydowns of that.
No, no, no.
Just from a basic, they can use this contract, but we haven't get to the maximum amount and we may have to do an additional contract at that time. Because right now, we have a hundred and thirteen thousand on the line item to be able to uncover the money right now for, to get moving and get the material out there.
It's separate.
Commissioner, I guess the best way I can explain it to you is if you're asking me to go out and grade a road and we need to take base course out, we're gonna take it out of here. If you ask me to go put spotlights in your area, we're gonna take it out of here. So, we have to be careful that we don't spend your fifty-six thousand on just base course because you may have needs in the future.
No, no, I understand that part, but what I'm trying to get at is the camp co-op is super.
It's separate.
That's separate? So, that was gonna go up here?
Yes.
Either was that too big with state contract or depending on the dollar amount.
Why is it that they gotta do it twice?
Well, because this is coming out of general fund. The other one, we have to actually wait till we get our amount from the state, figure out to what districts that's gonna go and then we have to put it up to bid because we have to report back to the state.
No, there's guidelines.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, so, so it's not, this is not the fifty-six grand. Fifty-six grand is the LGR. This is the hundred and thirteen thousand that we divided by five and that's where I got the money for lower guy. That's, that's where I got the twenty-five grand or whatever it comes to to buy the hot mix.
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you that, Commissioner, I, I'd have to again sit and look at that, but those are all the projects that we're looking at, what the issues are on those projects and then how we, what the state, how we report back to the state and what those state targeted projects.
And they were all identified at the meeting, that, you know.
Okay, so let's go ahead and make a decision on item B, nine B, with regards to Northern Mountain Contract.
Commissioner. There's two items here. What is the?
Correct.
B and the other is the contract, if you take them separately and then I do have a comment on the contract.
Correct. Okay, so on the first item.
Move to group.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second. Clerk.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran. Commissioner Veroni.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
Uh, we'll move on to item C. This is.
Mr. Chairman, the, the separate item under B is the contract. That was what I was trying to explain. And very quickly, because of all the concerns that the commissioners have already expressed, this was originally just gonna be approval of the bid and I, Thursday or Friday, said, let's put the contract on there as well so that we can accelerate this process. And that means I haven't run the contract by the contractors. So, if the commission wants to approve the contract, if you could give the county attorney flexibility to make minor changes.
And that amount is thirty-three thousand nine hundred?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a motion?
No. Giving Commissioner Malone that flexibility.
I'll go ahead and second. Any other discussion? Hopefully not. Clerk.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran. Commissioner Veroni.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes. Okay.
We're finally in a break, man.
Five minute break, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? I'll go ahead and second. Clerk.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Is this for lunch? Is this our lunch break?
Uh, five minute break.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran. Mr. Duran. Commissioner Veroni.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes. Okay, clerk. I'll go ahead and second. Clerk.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Commissioner Veroni.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, someone would break for dog.
For, for one hour?
Yeah.
We do have the one thirty hearing on the Blackstone Ranch and so just wanted to be careful that we don't.
Do you think we have that half hour before that to finish up the agenda before we go into that?
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay. Optimistic. Okay, I'll go ahead and second, Commissioner Duran's motion. Clerk.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Commissioner Veroni.
To be a comment, you know.
Chairman Romano.
Yes. Yes. Okay, very good. Are you gonna leave me? Commissioners, someone to come back? Secretary? Clerk is ready?
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Commissioner Veroni. Chairman Romano.
Yes. Commissioner Sanchez is out. We'll move on to item nine C. This is discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the recommendation of award IFB two thousand fifteen dash one road and construction materials and services to Mr. Robert Medina and Sons and approval for contract of the amount of seventy-nine thousand one hundred dollars inclusive of GRT. Mr. Hill, welcome back.
Thank you. I'll have your lunch. Again, this, this was one of the bids, also the invitation for bid two thousand fifteen and one that was issued out on August fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. This contract actually is their bids were for the base course, other kinds of materials which are natural finds, pressured finds, pit run aggregate inch, inch and a half. This is more of, more materials in terms of dirt versus the previous contract. So, this, this is all too for maintenance of roads through obviously public works and other areas. So, based on, again, on the bid tabulations, the base course prices were actually cheaper through Medina and Sons. So, that's why we had chosen the base course and the pit run and the aggregate, their prices were better than what was bitted by Northern Mountain Constructors.
Very good.
Someone to group. Second.
Clerk.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Commissioner Veroni.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we also have this one, have the two items, the bid and the contract. It's a separate, it's a separate item in there. And again, in connection with the contract, in order to try to accelerate things, I put that together at the last minute last week and asked that it be added and I haven't had a chance to run it by Medina. So, again, if commission voting on the contract, see it's way clear to give me the flexibility to make minor changes, I would appreciate it.
Okay, is there a?
So, move with that.
Derek.
Clerk.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Duran.
Yes.
Commissioner Veroni.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item nine D, discussion, consideration, decisions regarding contract over TCC, two thousand fourteen dash zero thirty-four contract of the vast communication and electronics equipment incorporated to quick install a microwave link between E911 dispatch center and the San Antonio mountain repeater site. Mr. Alan Sanchez, welcome.
Chairman Commissioners, before you have the legislative quote from vast communications, this is to upgrade the existing radio link between nine one one and San Antonio mountain. This is the link that we had issues with about a year ago when we kept having flag go down the flag repeater site and the molly repeater site. It was actually a equipment issue on San Antonio mountain that was causing that problem. So, this is the upgrade for that radio link to San Antonio mountain to poster communications with flag and molly repeater. The money for this comes out of our two thousand thirteen shish gap grant under the OEM position. With the exception of the performance bond, that would have to come out of the OEM budget, which there is money in the OEM budget to cover the performance bond.
And, Mr. Chairman, the amount of this is.
Total amount right now with the performance bond is fifty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventeen cents. The two thousand thirteen shish gap grant that we got in November of last year was for the amount of seventy-five thousand. So, the remainder part of that money will go to some of the repeater upgrades that was outlined and he has built that advanced communications to help also about a year ago.
And, and, what line item is this from?
It's out of a grant. I talked to Leon Brode, there's not a specific line item in it yet. He needs to put that into a line item in the budget. But the only part that comes out of any county money is what's outlined in the OEM budget for, for contracts. And that's just for the amount of nineteen hundred dollars and nineteen, one thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and seven cents. And that's just to cover the performance bond. That won't be covered by the grant.
So, one to the clerk.
Mr. Chairman, again, this is one that came to my attention very, very late last week and I had it shown to the vendor and so again, asked the commission to give me the flexibility to make minor changes.
Okay.
One more, chairman, back to the.
No, this is just one.
Okay. Give attorney the flexibility.
You know, second, discussion. And Sanchez is the, I mean, the best fix for this, I guess, problem that we continue to have or, I mean, are we, are we just putting a Band-Aid on something?
No, we, we did a Band-Aid fix probably about nine months ago by buying an additional radio. But the issue was FCC mandated that all radio frequencies had to be narrow banded by the end of, of two thousand twelve. When we did that, the radios lost some other sensitivities. So, we were sending a radio signal, but it wasn't strong enough to make the switch at the repeater site. We bought an additional radio that had more power about a year ago. It was about a six thousand dollar fix at the time. We haven't had any issues with flag or Amalia since then, but this would be the permanent fix. It's gonna be a point-to-point system. It's not UHF or VHF. It's actually gonna be in the nine hundred, nine hundred megahertz range. So, it's gonna be a much more focused signal. This system, when it's installed, will also allow us to use San Antonio mountain basically as a hub. This radio will handle twenty-two different sets of frequencies that we could send out to other radios. So, this is a much greater fix than what we currently even did as the Band-Aid fix. So, this should strengthen the system.
And the broadband won't have anything with the installation have anything to do?
Broadband with this won't have anything to do with it. The, the one thing that I have heard about the broadband and I don't know if Mr. Reyes had expressed it was anywhere where there was an electrical meter, there was gonna be broadband service. So, it is true that San Antonio mountain does have dedicated electrical service. So, at some point, I would assume that there's gonna be broadband hookup to the San Antonio site that we could use in conjunction with this. But at, at this time, I don't know if there's been any fiber optic line runs into the top San Antonio mountain.
I thought the most further out portions were done first, so that's something we might check into if we might. And I thought the most further out portions were done first, so that's something we might check into if we might want.
Like I say, the last word when I talked to Kit Carson, uh, was that wherever there was gonna be an electrical meter, uh, an electrical dedicated service, there would be fiber taken to that. But I, like I say, sir, I don't know if there's been anything to put up the top San Antonio mountain as far as the fiber run.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Chairman Romero.
Yes. Okay. We'll move on to item, uh, ten A, uh, resolutions, ordinances, discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the following item, ordinance two thousand fourteen dash six, repealing a county local option grocery receipts tax. Mister Malone.
You know, it's serious when he goes down there.
Mister Chairman, um, there are two related items, A and B are related. A is the ordinance, B is the election resolution. Just to put this in a framework for the Commission, this is the, um, end result of the path that we've started down over the last two or three meetings to repurpose the third one-eighth grocery receipts tax. The, the current, uh, third one-eighth grocery receipts tax was passed in nineteen eighty-eight. And when it was passed, it was, uh, limited to, uh, indigent patients. So that money can only be spent for that purpose. The statute currently allows that third one-eighth to be purposed for general purposes, general fund purposes. And so the Commission has indicated its desire to repurpose that third one-eighth. And the alternative that the Commission decided upon was repealing existing third one-eighth. And if the vote, and that, let me stop and kind of go to a footnote here, that does have to go to the voters because the, uh, in nineteen eighty-eight, when the third one-eighth was passed, the statute required it to go to the voters and it did in fact go to the voters and the voters approved it. Tax and Revenue Department has indicated that, um, in order to either amend or repeal, um, a, a grocery receipts tax, you have to follow the procedure that was followed when it was originally adopted. So to repeal this, it has to go back to the voters. And that's why you have both an ordinance and a resolution. The ordinance gets passed, but it doesn't take effect until after the voters approve it. And so this resolution would pay, place this question on the general election ballot for November, uh, the fourth. And just to remind and make sure that it's fresh in everybody's mind, I want to make sure that the Commission understands the different results that could occur. Obviously, the voters, um, at the sp- at the general election could decide not to repeal this, um, third one-eighth. And if they did that, it would stay dedicated to, um, indigent patients. If they do go ahead and repeal it, then this Commission, under the current statute, can, without going back to the voters, uh, replace it with the same amount, the third one-eighth, but dedicated for general purposes because the statute now allows that. Now, as I've...
When you say general purpose, how general?
It's literally gen- any, any legitimate government function. When we, when the current statute says that it doesn't have to go back to the voters, you have to understand that there's a sixty-day period in which the voters can, by petition, require a referendum on it. And so it doesn't have to initially go back to the voters, but the voters still have the right to weigh in with a petition. And that's the point I want to make sure that is clear to the Commissioners, that you could have a situation, I don't know how likely it is, that's not a legal issue, that's a political issue, what your best judgment is on this, but you could have a situation where the, um, existing one-eighth is repealed. You pass the new one-eighth, the voters petition for a referendum, and then reject the new one-eighth. So that is a possible result. And I just want to make sure the Commission understands that that's one of the possible outcomes on the legal pathway that we're, that we're embarked upon.
Mister Brody.
He answered my question, uh, Chairman. I was just wondering about the process. We do have to be, the, the actual question on the ballot is going to be, do we want to repeal or...
Yes, to refresh the Commission's memory, because this is the last opportunity. Once you vote on this, we're starting down a pathway that we're then committed to. Um, there, the, there was one other option, and that was amending it rather than repealing it. If we amended it, it would still go to the voters. The voters would make the decision to amend the nineteen eighty-eight, uh, ordinance to be for general purposes. But then in the future, it would still always have to go back to the voters. It would no longer correspond to the modern version of the statute. And the Commission was inclined, when I explained that at two or three previous meetings, to go the repeal route um, because it modernized our ordinance to comply with the current statute. So you still have the option of voting this down and saying, Bob, you know, take us down another path. We would not be able to get it on the general election, we would have to call a special election to do that. But at the previous meetings, this is the path that you've asked me to take you down. So the first item is the ordinance, and if you pass it, then there would be a resolution, uh, placing that, uh, repeal on the general election ballot.
So move to the ordinance two thousand fourteen dash six.
Okay.
Oh, I'll go ahead and second. That was a quick motion.
Eight hundred thousand to pay roads and financials.
Any, any other discussion? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, um, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Chairman Romero.
Yes. Okay.
Then the second item before you is a resolution that simply directs the clerk to place this question, the repeal of the third one-eighth GRT, uh, on the general election.
So who's approved resolution two thousand fourteen dash thirty? I might be a little bit, but I'm not a...
Second. Madam Clerk.
Oh, excuse me, uh, Mister...
Mister Blankenhorn.
The, the question is real short and simple and it doesn't include any, uh, details such as this tax can only be used for indigent patient care. And I wonder if it's important for us, how are we going to do this? How are we going to educate the, uh, voting public about what we're doing and why we're doing it? Since there's no hint in the question.
Yeah, and let me address that two different ways. First of all, the actual ordinance and the document. The ordinance, the, the repealing ordinance doesn't say anything about what it's dedicated to. And that's because we are required by taxation and revenue to use a form that they dictate. I had to run this by them for their approval and it's based on their form, which doesn't provide that more elaborate information. And since the ordinance doesn't provide that more elaborate information, um, Anna and I, working together, Anna advising me that the resolution needs to match up to the ordinance. So in the actual two documents, that information is not there. Uh, it would be entirely appropriate for, and I think the county should, take out, um, some kind of an advertisement in the Taos News to advise the voters about what, what's being planned, that, that your plan is to repurpose this, uh, one-eighth.
But when you go into vote, the actual question on the ballot will be the one without any information other than repeal?
Correct.
And that's set in stone somehow?
Well, the, the ordinance is what's set in stone because tax and revenue has to approve the repealing ordinance. And they give, they have a book that has a form for the repealing ordinance. And it doesn't have any space to list the dedication, the, the, uh, purpose to which the ordinance is dedicated. And so, um, the resolution then has to track what the ordinance is.
And the ballot question has to track?
That's what I mean by the ballot, the, the resolution setting the ballot question.
Right.
So if, when I say has to, that's not dictated by tax and Rev. That was in consultation with Anna and I about what the resolution should look like. If, um, trying to think of, uh... This Commission could direct me to modify that. And that would be an appropriate amendment to the resolution that's been prepared. We could interliniate it, get it re-typed.
Well, I'd like to know, I'd like the public to know what they're voting for.
Yeah.
Um, it's easy to say, I mean, if I was just voting, I'd say, yeah, sure, that's familiar to them.
Uh, so, Mister Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Blankenhorn, we also have an obligation to educate the public and that'll be done through a publication in the Taos News or maybe radio. We cannot push them in a certain direction, vote yes or vote no, but we do have to be transparent in actually saying that we're repealing this, or we're wanting to repeal this and we're also, and for them to vote on it, and also that we're wanting to be dedicated. I think that's, that's something, we've been meeting with, uh, RBC and Associates, our financial managers, and they're helping us craft some of the language and bullet points that we're gonna have to put in the newspaper to, to help educate the public on it.
And is there advice to keep the, uh, question?
I don't think that the resolution was run by them.
Uh-huh. I just wonder what the best way to do this, what other communities do, uh, in a situation like this, you know? Should you include the language that, which imposed a tax of one-eighth and one percent grocery receipts tax to be applied for indigent patient care? Uh, or, or is it better just to keep it like this and then make your explanations in a separate, uh, separate forum or separate publications? I just raise a question, I don't think they know the answer.
I, I don't have a legal answer for you, Commissioner Blankenhorn. That's more a function of public relations and public education and what works best. And that ultimately needs to be left up to this Commission's wisdom. And as I indicated, from a legal perspective, it would be easy enough to interliniate language and we'd do it right here and now. Put that language, if that's the Commission's preference. Um, the current plan is to explain that in whatever advertisement is taken out in the, uh, in the Taos News. We would have to, if we're gonna change this, we'd need to do it today though because of the timeline to get this on the general election. So if, you know, again, if that's the Commission's preference, we can work out the language right here and now.
Yeah, well, maybe a few more words would just be more confusing because it just, then people would say, well, it, you're cutting back on the indigent patient care. But the whole story is, of course, that we still have funds for that and, and it's, it's a somewhat complicated story. So maybe we should tell the story in its own way and leave it as is. Uh, that's my opinion.
So right now there is, um, motion on the second item?
Yes.
On the second? Um, any other discussions? Mister Philkey did?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, this seems like the same, uh, the same issue that came up when we were trying to run, uh, to the public to support, uh, the additional taxes for this building, for these, this whole complex. And what, what the county was up against then was they couldn't advocate to the public to pass, uh, to pass the tax. So we had to form a committee for a yes vote, an independent committee. The county could only do full-page ads that were educational and informative. They couldn't do any advocating, so we got a separate group to do the advocating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Philkey. Madam Clerk, well, Mister Brody.
No, I was just...
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Chairman Romero.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Mister Malone. We'll move on to Department Matters, item eleven.
Mister Chairman, I think we have...
The hearing, public hearing? Okay, um, so we don't have to adjourn the agenda today for, for now or, uh... We don't have to take a break and maybe just move forward to the public hearing?
Just move forward to the continuation of the previously opened public hearing.
Okay.
And just as a reminder, Mister Chairman, it was for the limited, when you, when you continued it to today, you continued it for the limited purpose of the Commission reviewing the decision prepared by your planning department.
Okay, so we, we do have to amend the agenda for skipping Department Matters for now?
So move to table item eleven A and B, and move on to item twelve.
Do we want to table, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner...
Do we want to amend the agenda to hear back to public hearing first?
Okay. I'll just go back to...
Thank you. And I'll second. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Chairman Romero.
Yes. Okay, this time, uh, we move on to the item twelve, public hearing, scheduled for one-thirty this afternoon. This is item A, continuation from the August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. Uh, it's up for discussion, considerations, decisions regarding the approval of the decision of the VCC regarding Blackstone Ranch appeal. Mister Edward Behill, good afternoon, welcome back.
Good afternoon, Mister Chairman, Commissioners, Mister Archeletta, Mister Malone. Uh, Mister Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Mister Malone touched right on the basis of this continuation, exactly. Uh, back on August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, you, the board of county commissioners, having heard the evidence and reviewed the record and having received planning staff's recommendations and conditions, voted four-zero in favor of the motion to reverse the June eleventh, two thousand fourteen, planning commission's decision and grant major development permit zero-zero-one two thousand fourteen, based on certain findings and subject to certain conditions, stated on the record with this, uh, direction to planning staff with the assistance of, with the county attorney to prepare good decision incorporating the board's decisions, findings, and conditions. Mister Chairman, Commissioners, you should have a copy of the decision of the board of county commissioners regarding, uh, the appeal in your packet. Uh, this is the decision that, I think, planning department and planning staff in, uh, collaboration with the county attorney put forth and is for your reasonable approval today.
Mister Malone, uh, to the best of your knowledge, we incorporated all the conditions that were set forth?
Commissioner Brody, I reviewed the, uh, decision draft about the planning department, made some proposed changes which are now incorporated. And yes, it is my opinion that this, uh, includes all of your findings and all of the conditions that you imposed upon the, uh, major development permit.
And the, and the applicant had opportunities to review them?
They...
It's not... No.
Apparently not, Mister Baker shaking his head.
Mister, Mister Chairman, Commissioner Brody, uh, the applicant has not reviewed the decision. Uh, the applicant, uh, briefly, uh, glanced at the decision just prior to the public hearing. Uh, the, I won't speak on behalf of the applicant, but the applicant did raise clarification concerns with number sixteen of the decision. And if you would like to hear his, uh, concern regarding this particular one, uh, if it, if it appropriate, it comes to be coming out.
Sure.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, Commissioners. I wasn't preparing to address you today, I would have worn my lawyer clothes, um, but...
Edward, come here.
To be clear, we, I did not have a chance to review this, um, except for the minute before I walked into the room, um, when I caught Edward outside, but the, um, the conditions are, as, as I think is the Commission imposed on project, uh, approval. But with regard to sixteen, I, my feeling is that there is some room for interpretation that perhaps could be, um, closed with some additional language. The, the language said booking reservations at the main house and red barn shall be for small groups only and not for individuals. I think the intention there is that, um, rooms not be rented to individual travelers for single night stays and that kind of thing. Um, and, uh, there are situations though where a group might book the facility for a conference, but individuals attending that event would, would actually call to rent, rent the rooms for that event. Um, and so in the industry, the, the term individual traveler has, uh, special significance. And I would propose that the condition actually state that booking reservations at the main house and red barn shall be for small group or just group events only and not for individual travelers. Uh, and I think that would help to clarify the potential confusion down the road when there might be a different management company in place and there may be a different commission sitting here. That's all I have, uh, Mister Chairman.
Mister, Mister, um... Mister Chairman, I have no problem in terms of my recollection of the, again, this is just supposed to accurately reflect the board's decision, not change the board's decision. Um, I have no problem with the phrase individual travelers. Uh, I think that throughout the entire hearing, um, that was previously held, the phrase small groups was used and not groups.
Right.
Mister Chairman, uh, I would like Mister Behill to read out the findings, make sure that they're...
Into the record. We can do that.
Thank, thank you, Mister Chairman, Commissioners. Um, if you would like also, in addition to me reading the findings and the conditions into the record, I do have the decision available, if you would like those, to project that on the, on the monitors as well.
That would be good.
And, Mister Chairman, just as, as a, perhaps some assistance to Mister Behill, if, that would not be the entire decision, the findings and the conditions...
be the entire decision, the findings and the conditions start with six, so it would avoid having to go through a lot of preliminary step. Is that acceptable, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I will refer you to the, to page six. At the middle of the page, and I will begin by indicating the board account, the board voted to continue the public hearing until September 2nd, 2014 at 1:30 PM and the county commission chambers for the limited purpose of consideration, excuse me, of consideration and action of the board on the written decision prepared by planning staff. The board finds as follows. Number one, the development complies with the development compatibility standards as the use or uses identified in major development permit major development 001-2014 are compatible with and sensitive to the existing historic uses in the environment of, of the site and the neighborhood and are consistent with the values vision current mode pattern of the community. Number two, the development complies with the development compatibility standards as Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Number two, the development complies with the development compatibility, compatibility standards as the visual impact of development is compatible and sensitive to the architectural design, scale, bulk, and building height, identity, historical character, disposition, and orientation to the existing properties in the neighborhood.
Some pages.
Number three, the performance standards associated with a major development permit application have each been met. The board also imposes the following conditions to the approval of major development 001-2014. Number one, this permit is approved for the uses identified in the application as subject to all conditions of the application and stated by the applicant during the public hearing in addition to the conditions that follow. All requirements and conditions of major development permit 003-2008 remain in effect except for those specifically changed by this permit, major development permit 001-2014. Number two, any changes to the uses permitted other than minor changes will require a new major development permit. Minor changes will require additional approval pursuant to the land use regulations in effect at the time of the request of changes. Number three, the applicant shall approve the existing AD8 parking spaces located at the main house and at the red barn with asphalt, concrete, or compact materials to establish an hard surface for the easy navigation of foot chairs. Number four, all artificial light sources such as parking lot lights, pedestrian lights, or security lighting must be structured to avoid unnecessary, unnecessary glare. In the case of light standards fixtures that cover up or shield the light, sources shall be used letter A under number four. All exterior lighting shall comply with the ordinance 2006-9 Lights Protection Act. Number five, approval of major development permit number one, 2014 does not constitute approval for any type of construction and more related construction improvements other than the improvements to the AD parking spaces. Number six, access to the Blackstone Ranch for uses allowed at the main house and red barn for both guests and employees shall be restricted to the access of New Mexico State Road 240, the existing main entrance through the Riverside property parcel A-1-4, tab four of exhibit three, letter A under number six. The applicant shall place a stop sign at the intersection of Riverside-Glassstone Ranch Road and New Mexico State Road 240. Letter B under number six, the Lower's Road access is limited to have cultural activities and emergency purposes. All other access, accesses are limited to emergency purposes. Number seven, off-street parking including loading and unloading shall be contained within the designated parking areas. Number eight, the disposal of solid waste on the site other than trash receptacles is prohibited. Number A, letter A under number eight, solid waste generated during events shall be disposed of at account to improve transportation or improve landfill. Letter B under number eight, solid waste disposal unit or units shall not be visible on adjacent streets and shall be screened.
Mr. Hill, with regards to access to the Blackstone Ranch, the main entrance, does the New Mexico Department of Transportation have to give approval to that, to that section?
Mr. Chairman, I can probably answer that quickly if you'll go to paragraph 13, which Mr. Hill has not yet reached, it provides for that.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Malone, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Archeletta. Under letter C on number eight, food waste product which is the grease trap shall be disposed of properly. Number nine, the applicant shall obtain approval of the alcohol and gaming division of the New Mexico Regulation License Department prior to any liquor sales, letter A under number nine. The applicant shall provide a copy of the alcohol and gaming division's approval to serve alcohol to the planning department as soon as that becomes available. Number 10, the applicant or property manager designated by the applicant shall obtain an approved town county business registration reflective of the new uses. The applicant shall provide a copy of the town county business registration to the town county planning department. Number 11, the applicant's fire prevention plan approved under major development permit number three-2008 shall remain in effect unless after contacting the state fire marshal or in part in condition number 14 below, the state fire marshal determines that the existing fire suppression system is inadequate, in which case the applicant shall comply with any additional requirements by the state fire marshal before commencing the uses allowed by this permit. Number 12, the rarest commercial uses identified in major development permit number one, 2014 application shall only be applicable to the main house and to the red barn. Number 13, the applicant required to open in the hotel for business shall contact the New Mexico Department of Transportation for a determination as to whether or not the existing access onto New Mexico State Road 240 is adequate or requires modification. Letter A under number 13, applicant shall provide the planning department with the responsibility of the New Mexico Department of Transportation and the applicant shall comply with conditions of approval from the NMDOT, if any, before commencing any new use. Number 14, the applicant shall contact the New Mexico State Fire Marshal's office for a determination as to whether NFPA 13R compliance figure system is adequate for commercial purposes such as a hotel and if it is not adequate, the applicant shall comply with any additional requirements by the state fire marshal before commencing the uses allowed by this permit. Number 15, no additional physical structure shall be allowed except for agricultural purposes. All open space will remain active sustainable agricultural land or land for educational, agricultural purposes. Number 16, booking reservations at the main house and red barn shall be for small groups only and for not individual travelers as requested by Mr. Baker. Number 17, the restaurants within the main house shall serve guests of the main house and the red barn only. Number 18, alcohol shall be served to guests of the main house and the red barn only. And lastly, number 19, no outdoor activities excluding agricultural will be conducted between the hours of 10:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Is the site available for, say, for example, riding horses or stuff like that, walking?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, to the best of my knowledge, I believe it is available only for guests of the ranch. We could ask Mr. Baker to allow it to the red barn.
This, this, number 10 would not prohibit that, correct?
It would not. And, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, clarification, again, Blackstone Ranch is a sustainable and working ranch, that use will remain, the application for business registration is only to conduct business out of the main house and red barn.
Go back to the last one. So I just want to, with your question on number 10, how many are number 19? So if a outfitter went in there, because even though, because it's a, I guess, a business that is being put in there, they wouldn't be able to start until 10:00 AM and they'd have to be finished by 10:00 PM.
As, as long as it was not meant to agricultural use, that would be correct.
Well, horseback riding, depends on how you want to look at it. If it's just to go around out the towns, but again, if it's a.
The pleasure.
I, I think you probably found a little bit of a loophole there, Commissioner Brody, and it's probably subject to interpretation.
That's kind of why I asked as well.
I mean, we're, we're certainly open to any suggestion or recommendation if you'd like to amend number 19.
Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I, I just wanted to point out, I think number 19 is backwards, it essentially prohibits outdoor activities between 10:00 AM and 10:00 PM and I think it's supposed to require that only, or that outdoor activities only occur during those hours.
I agree, it's backwards. I'm glad you caught that, thank you. But that doesn't address the question that Commissioner Brody was raising. I mean, we need to make that correction.
Any, any suggested language, Mr. Malone?
Not really, I, I don't have any, Mr. Chairman. I, I think that you're never going to be able to be absolutely a hundred percent precise, but just recreational horseback riding is not agricultural to me, I mean, to use that example.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Mr. Malone, Mr. Archeletta, just a simple suggestion, how about no outdoor commercial activities? We impose the limits of commercial private activities.
But that in itself is a prohibitive, say, for example, there is a delivery truck coming in to bring in food or whatever, that would be commercial activity, correct?
Group, could I add, group?
Group.
No outdoor.
Oh, okay, good, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, that seems like a move in the right direction to address what your concerns are, so I've agreed, no outdoor commercial group activities excluding agriculture will be conducted between 10:00 PM and 10:00 AM.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, summary.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, also just to clarify, it wasn't clear to me, although a recommendation was made by the applicant and apparently adopted by Mr. Hill, whether he is proposing that on paragraph 16, that not for individuals be changed to read not for individual travelers, is that your recommendation, Mr. Hill?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Mr. Malone, it is.
Although, what is considered a small group?
I think, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, based on the public hearing that we, or the applicant proposes this application, I don't recall the exact number, but I believe they indicated a small group could be anywhere from five to 40 individuals, somewhere in that area.
A small group could be a family.
Could, could, because it would be a family and, and I think he indicated that the average would be somewhere about 30 individuals.
Mr. Malone, is the public allowed to speak at this point? Steven is wanting to say something.
You could open it up to public discussion if you'd like to, Mr. Chairman, you don't have to, it's your discretion.
Steven, you want to come forward?
And just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, the consideration here is not whether to approve or disapprove of this application, that's a decision this commission has already made, it's how to write the decision.
Yeah.
The, the 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM closure to group activities still doesn't address the question that Commissioner Brody has raised as to horseback riding. Does that constitute an agricultural use? It's as simple as that, doesn't, you know, these people come here to retreat for sustainable education, whatever it is they're talking about, I don't know what they're talking about, they may even, may not even talk about sustainable agriculture. But does their meeting there, is there a way to go out and have fun and ride horses and maybe go on a balloon ride, tethered balloon ride, what, how, how do you address those, those uses? It may be a fine line, but it's an important one as to the use of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. And the reason I brought that question up is because, you know, if they're teaching agriculture processes and they're teaching them about ranching and farming and they're pushing the cows around, well, it probably fits within that thing, but the whole idea was, I think, the, the balloon rides that were, that were early mornings where the noise is going to be kind of constrictive to the neighbors and that stuff, I think that was the least.
Mr. Sumches?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, maybe it could be something as, in the wording is, or the activities have to be associated to the nature of the conference, just as simple as that, that way, if it's something that's non-agricultural, it has to be within that timeline, but it has to be associated to the conference.
Your thoughts on that, Edward?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, obviously we as planning staff are certainly receptive to any suggestion or recommendation, I would yield the question more so to Mr. Baker and myself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I don't think that, I think the condition as drafted, as amended, is fine. I don't anticipate there to be any agricultural activities in the late night. Certainly there might be, you know, 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM, there might be out there with cattle or cutting, cutting hay, that kind of thing, but I understand the intent of the provision and I think it's adequate, I, you know, I mean, no commercial activity, so we're not going to be doing balloon flights until 10:00 AM if that's what they want to do. If they're having an outdoor conference workshop or event associated with, you know, the hospitality aspect of the operation as opposed to the agricultural, then it can only happen between 10:00 AM and 10:00 PM if it's going to be outdoors. And I think it's fairly clear, I don't, I don't really see any need to belabor the point. Thank you.
I'm comfortable with it, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Commissioners, anything else? That's it? It's one more to approve?
Steven.
Okay, Steven, come forward again.
This is from the 2014 application, this was presented in their appeal. Uses would be limited to those expressly granted by the board, you have that power of, you can, you can, you can limit in any way, shape, form, or fashion you wish to.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Steven.
Does the chairman approve the 19?
I'll go ahead and second. We have a clarification from Commissioner Duran, are you moving to approve the decision with the modifications to 16 and 19?
Yes. Okay. Just modifications.
Right.
Ethan, you did second? Okay. Any other comments, questions, revisions? Madam Court?
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Duran?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Chairman Romero?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we will. Someone to amend the agenda? Go back, we don't need a motion. Okay, very good. Okay, we'll go ahead and continue with the agenda. Item 11A, Department Matters, discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the reported recommendations of the Road View. reported recommendations of the road viewer committee for Spruce Lane and Camino de las Placas. Mr. Steven?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I was actually gonna pull this agenda item, but felt that it was important for the commission to know that we don't have a report today from the road viewers, because we failed to have a quorum on that. Based on that, I would like to entertain a discussion with the commission to see if you would like to add more people to the road viewers, if you want us to publicize that. It seems like there's been a loss of interest by the road viewers. And in discussion with that, I'd also like to talk to the commission also about maybe some limitations on roads as far as the, this budget cycle goes into place as we've discussed. And we've looked at, reference our budget, we're about one point six million unbalanced at this point. We're hoping to bring that into a zero unbalanced by the end of the year. But by adding new roads, adding new, more material, it just continues to push us a little bit further away. And so, I'd just like to have some discussion with the commission at this point to see what the commission wants to do and how they want staff to proceed. But at some point, we are gonna have to have the road viewers committee either re-advertized and see if we can get some people that would have wanted some interest in it. Obviously, we had one person show up this time in order to do that, but it didn't constitute a quorum of the road viewers.
I would take your recommendation, Mr. Ochoa, that we post those positions as being available just to make sure that we always have a quorum. Because it is a, really a waste of time and delays in the process of being able to look at these roads in time and fashion, considering the fact that we do have the four seasons here and wanna be able to deal with these road matters as quickly as possible before winter. And it is there.
Mr. Chairman, how many do you have on the road viewers? Five?
I believe we actually have seven off the top of my head. But again, we've been, we've been struggling with three, getting three, getting four road in here. And so, it's been difficult. So my thought was that there's one individual that continues to be very consistent. We could take a look at that and then possibly we could advertise for the other positions and then just start filling those other positions. Maybe, maybe Commissioner Duran next year will be...
Yeah, I don't know.
So that's a great suggestion, we'll take that into consideration.
Start writing that invitation all in.
I'd be one of those that goes, huh.
So Commissioners, we can actually move in that direction and have that going. I think, I think the follow-up question to that is that at this, at this time, there hasn't been money budgeted into surveys, there hasn't been money, you know, we talked about the money today as far as what we have available. I think each commissioner already has sort of your projects in place with the current inventory of projects that we have out there. One of the things that we also are looking at, of course, is to go after some grant money, but with that also comes matching funds that we would have to actually cut into our budget in order to do that. So I'd like some direction from the commission as to how you guys would like to continue to proceed that. The problem that we have is that we have an inventory of roads already, and we have a hard time keeping up with it, maintaining them. We have twelve bridges right now in Tous County that we're actually looking at. We're trying to get two of them fixed right now. We're trying to figure out where the funding's gonna come from in order to get that. We could consider cutting each one of the five districts back as far as the money that they get so that we could, I'm getting a lot of problems on that one. But if we add roads, we keep adding roads, we keep, you know, increasing our inventory, we're having a difficult time keeping up with that unless, you know, I, I think that there's a likely alternative for us. And, you know, in November, the voters should be past this and we do, reallocate some of that money. But again, there's priorities. Is it gonna be the courthouse, is it gonna be roads, is, you know, what are those priorities? Is it gonna be closing the gap? I mean, there's a lot of priorities and decisions that need to be made. Staff can bring those forward to the commission, but at some point, we have to have a policy decision moving forward.
Mr. Chairman?
I, I think, you know, roads are always a major priority and, of course, with the old county courthouse, hopefully, we can work with the town and pool our resources. Steve, do you know how many petitions we have currently pending for adoption of new roads?
I, I believe that there's two of these are the two that are currently pending, but I also know that there's a request for an additional three or four that have come to us that happened to be made the agenda here.
Yeah, I know, there's, I have just one question. There's about seven or eight that we haven't rejected, or ten or twelve.
And we have rejected.
I think we rejected, and now that there seems to be a new standard on how we're gonna accept them, all those people, I'm sure, are waiting in line to come back. And they should have priority, because they've put their application in there, some of them four and five times already. I think that we have to continue to be prudent in the way we address these issues. And I think we've done a pretty good job of it. We have said yes to some and no to others, depending upon the costs and the number of people served. You know, I don't think it's, it's fair to say we should just say no to everybody. So, you know, obviously, for example, in my district, I, I know that there's a road pending where the people who live on the road have agreed to contribute and pay for the survey and pay for all of the initial upfront costs. There was a similar situation in a road in Commissioner Veroni's district, Santa Steva, which we did approve. They came up with the money and purchased the culverts and, and so, depending upon the situation, you know, depending upon how the road... Oh. Depending upon how the road sits and how many people it, it serves and how close we already come to grading that road, you know, the additional cost of adding some roads is going to be minimal and may even be offset by the additional money that you get from the state. And so, I hear you, you know, and, and I think that we, whenever we consider these roads, we have to keep your reminder in mind. But I don't think that, that we should say no to everybody as a matter of policy.
But, Mr. Commissioner Blankenhard, Mr. Chairman?
See, the thing about it is that all these older subdivisions that are created, weren't created. See, those are the ones that have been... And that's not, you know, the way I look at it, they ain't fair that the county should take over them now. And they didn't do what they were supposed to do in the first place, you know? You know, 'cause there's the, what's that road called? There are people are getting ready to come on in, and that's a subdivision just past the highway department. There's like probably a hundred fifty people out there back there. And that's what they say, you know, you can't get the ambulance in there, no, or the fire truck, no. 'Cause of the road conditions. The thing about it is, who's making the money? Nothing. The owner has a trade park out there and people that sold that land, you know? So, you know, I thought that, you know, when I first came into the commission, we had said that no more of adopted county roads, you know? That was one of the reasons, but just things have changed now.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so as I hear from the commission, I would ask for some guidance on this is that we'll continue to bring those forward in front of the commissions. The commission will make those decisions based on what the, the people that live on the road are willing to contribute in order to help through that. And then, in, in those cases where we don't have those contributions and we're asked to do that, then what we'll do is look at the money we have, pull some money, you know, fair from each district, or should it come from each district that the road's being redone for the survey? You know, and also, I mean, that's, that's something that we need to look at, so, yeah.
With, with regards to a survey, a lot of the counties I know from the state of New Mexico have an official survey record, someone who actually runs for that position. Is there any one in New Mexico that has that? It's actually an elected position.
I, I do not know, but I can send one out to the management affiliate and ask their, ask the manager affiliate if they have anything like that in their counties.
And so, I'm wondering if something like that would be more reasonable. Not necessarily saying that we need to create that elected position, but if we hired a surveyor on a contract basis, would that...
Again, that's a question that would be...
It takes money.
Takes money, and so, again, we could, you know, we approved an item for a hundred, ten thousand dollars today. We could look twenty thousand, cut everybody back by that amount, and then spread that survey, that surveys out. I mean, this is something new that Tous County has just recently been faced with in the past. We didn't do surveys in order to get the adoption of roads. So it's a budgetary issue that we need to look at. And so, do we wanna budget that out of their, out of general fund? Do we wanna budget that out of the road fund? You know, the road department can't absorb the cost, legal can't absorb the cost, 'cause we've already cut those budgets to, to the limit, so it's...
On the other hand, as, as a county, as elected officials, I really feel that we have a responsibility to our constituents to, to provide accessible roads. And I hear Commissioner Duran's argument about the old subdivisions and how they kind of sold their lots, made their money, and they left town and were left holding the bag. But, you know, like in Mr. Vilkey's area, you know, who's got a, a bad road that actually serves a number of residents? And it means that our ambulance or fire departments, police protection all utilize these roads to be able to get to their destination. And if they don't have an ideal road or a proper road, does that put the county at some sort of liability? Because we're not meeting the, the needs of making sure that those roads are properly maintained.
Mr. Chairman, the basic decision to have a road or not is not something that's subject to tort liability. Once we adopt it, we have an obligation to maintain it. But in terms of creating it or adopting it, we, we don't have any tort liability if you're doing that. That's considered a, a policy decision by this commission that it has to be free to do within its budgetary means.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm by no means arguing that we shouldn't adopt some of these roads. My issue is, where do you want me to take the money out of?
Yeah.
'Cause it's gotta come out somewhere. And so, we can, like I said, separate it five ways, from five different districts and hire in a contract meeting a surveyor and put that money away for there. Or if a road's gonna be adopted in a certain commissioner's district, then, you know, out of the fifty-six thousand or eighty-six thousand that's there, we take out that amount and say, okay, well, we're gonna take out two thousand just for survey for that road in your district, if that road's been adopted. I mean, those are just practical considerations there.
You're suggesting specific budget line items for this particular need for each district?
Well, not necessarily, Mr. Chairman. What I'm saying is, is that we didn't have this issue years ago. We have it now. And so, I'm asking for guidance from the commission. How do you want me to handle that? We can take that out of general fund, we can take that out of the manager's budget, we can take that out of the road's budget. I mean, it's, it's where we'll take it from, that's the issue. The, the road department can absorb it, litigation can absorb it, like I said, 'cause we already have priorities and, and projects for that. But those are practical considerations that we need to take a look at when we're looking at these issues.
Mr. Chairman, maybe the practical thing to do would be, see, this, my definition is already made. Wait for next year. Yep, when you guys, there'll be two or three new commissioners here, and there will be two of you here. And if you want to adopt roads, well, that's the time to do a certain line item for, that's not for getting another general fund.
Suggesting maybe a moratorium for now? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, maybe that's just hold down. Don't matter, 'cause where are we gonna get the money from? 'Cause the thing about it is, we have what, two hundred and some heavy road lots? So just figure that amount by what we get from the cat go out. So they give you probably like five dollars a month. You have to maintain, but you have to...
The other, the other thing, Commissioners, just for your information, as you guys know, we lease our graders for, for these roads. Some of our graders now are about a hundred hours left on that lease. After that, we have to prepare to start paying twenty dollars per hour per grader moving out there. And so, that lease also does not come forth until September twenty fifteen, which is a year from now. And so, we have to limit the amount of, you know, the work that we're doing on the graders. What we're doing right now is shifting graders in between districts to sort of keep the time down so that we make sure that we don't go past that. But all of these things are, are things that we have to take into consideration. We'll look at that. So again, if we're adopting our roads and we're gonna use six hours of grader time to get that road in to prepare, that's six hours we're gonna take away from other roads that are in the adoptions, are on the county list. So those are just things for, for your consideration, but...
And it also spreads the little bit of money that we do have to fix the roads that are adopted. I mean, we can go around the county and look at all the potholes and roads that need to be resurfaced and, you know, roads that, you know, that we haven't done anything for years because we haven't had the money. But now we'll take the money and spread it even a little further, but I get that, kinda.
Commissioner Blankenhard?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Under the statute, if a petition is signed, you have to send road viewers out and then you have to make a decision. So, you know, we can't just say we're not gonna consider it, because we have to. This is, this is a discussion, obviously, for all of us, keep in mind when, when a question comes before us. How many miles of roads did you say we had?
Five hundred.
I believe it's three hundred and twenty, but that's just out of the top of my head.
Three hundred and twenty miles.
Yes.
And we get three hundred grand a year, so...
Two eighty-seven, I have.
More or less.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, what is that? Three hundred, that's ten bucks, huh? That's ten bucks a mile, huh? Yeah. Doesn't pay for much, does it?
Unfortunately.
Well, I think that it should probably come out of that hundred and thirteen. If, if, if we adopt roads in each individual district, then the survey costs and the initial costs of bringing it up to standards, I think should come out of the hundred and thirteen that's part of the budget that, that we each get to divide, which, of course, has nothing to do with the LGF.
That's correct.
And that's, that's just our, our general operating budget. And that money has already been spoken for up until June of two thousand and fifteen?
That's correct.
That's, that's, and so...
It doesn't mean that we can't go back and reduce that amount and then put out an RFP for surveying services or, or something like that?
Right.
For that effect, so it just depends on how many roads the commission is wanting, or if we could get maybe a, a set price on the surveys. Again, it's, it's an issue in the length. When was the last survey done? You know, the surveyors look at that as far as the price folks go. But if we could get maybe a standing price from the surveyors, an average price, and they could be willing to honor that, then maybe we could, could look at that and take that into consideration so that we know it's gonna be two thousand dollars per survey that the commission wants.
And, and Commissioner Blankenhard, was that specifically, I mean, if you said, if each of us were getting fifty-eight thousand or sixty-eight, I can remember whatever it was. More like twenty-nine. No, the fifty-eight is from the LGF.
So it's one thirteen divided by five districts, right? So it's like twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
So what you're saying is if you adopt a road in your district, you would be taking it out of that portion? You, the portion that's allocated for your district? No, that would only be if you were adopting a road in your district. No, no, that was the idea.
But, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the thing about it is that where you guys are gonna get all the slack from is here. You know, people in Mendazco, there ain't no, you know what? I mean, there ain't, maybe Silk, you might wanna have his road adopted, but that's it. Other than that, see, and it's not really fair that it comes out of the whole block, you know?
But that's why it is fair, is because then each of us has to make that decision carefully, right? Because it's coming out of what otherwise would go to our district. Isn't that right?
Yeah.
Just your, your own portion, not, not the overall portion.
That's a good thought. We can work some numbers, Mr. Chairman, and, and get back to the commission on that. We can also try to talk to some surveyors to see if we'd have people that would be willing to sign... to sign a contract for a certain amount of roads or possibly a standing price for most roads in Tous County.
Because also we're looking at a survey, for example, for, you know, if it's $2,000, but if it's just maybe a little bit of a dogway, say for example, like that extension off of that road by the health spot or munch or something, how would something like that, that simple, how would that work? How would it be?
That's something that we have to talk to the surveyors about because again, it depends on the survey laws, you know, what's their moratorium on that and how much research they're going to have to do to get them.
Okay, so right now then you're not expecting an official vote on item A?
Just guidance and I think we've got the guidance. The other issue around that is that we will go ahead and publicize for more road viewers and then we'll bring that in front of the Commissioners so we can get that so that we can hopefully have a court any time we have a road for adoption.
Very good. Okay, so we can go on to item B then on department matters. This is discussion, consideration, decision regarding the request for approval for Willer Peak Department or District applying for the MSF Fire Protection Grant match in the amount of $12,450. Mr. Sancho?
Chairman, Commissioners, I'm before here for you today requesting basically approval for Willer Peak to apply for a grant, the grant that they're applying for through the State Fire Marshal's Office. It's a fire protection grant. The grant, total grant would be in the amount of $62,250. The county's portion of that match would be $12,450, which they do have out of their state fire marshal funds. So it's money that's already in their existing budget out of their 209 line item.
Okay, so I want to agree. I'll go in second. What was the total amount of the grant?
The total amount of the grant with the match included will come up to $62,250.
And it is for what type of fire protection?
The money that they're going to use for part goes towards apparatus, a part goes towards some trailer for to move some equipment around. And then they're also asking to purchase a cascade system, which is a breathing air system for the STV packs that they use on construction fires.
Okay. A motion has been made. Was there any second? I'll go in second.
You did, you said.
Yeah, I did say it, okay.
Commissioner Blakenburg?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Brony?
Yes.
Chairman Rometta?
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to item 13, the county management report and matters. Any discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the old county courthouse.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in your packet you'll find that we have one response back. You guys are well aware of that response as far as the old county courthouse. We do have a couple of other people that are actually going to send us some responses as far as the square footage and the going commercial rate. They've gone in there, they're looking at the courthouse, they're looking at access and so... But we don't have those quotas yet, so I would ask the Commission to please... I would ask the Commission to please go ahead and table this if possible until that term.
Okay, Cal, questions for you for after, if you can, or for me, go on.
Just one second. I was just going to ask him about, there's been several fires and smells like tires burning. I thought it was, I mean, the smoke in, I thought it was last night was horrible. I mean, all night, you know, and getting calls and just maybe one for the viewing audience. Do you know anything about those fires? What was burning? Was it toxic?
I haven't heard of anything burning. I haven't even heard of anything out of the ordinary as far as the amount of burn permits that we do have that are being assigned. If it's in that area, it could be something drifting out of the town. I have no control over what the town chooses as far as burn permits goes. As far as wildland fires in the area, we only have two. Both of them are pretty much prescribed burns. One of them is in the Hemis Ranger District that they're actually igniting today. They're doing some aerial ignition on that. It was at 152 acres yesterday. I think they're probably wanting to get about close to like 300 or 400 acres before they get some weather this weekend. And then I got an email today of them getting ready to do a prescribed burn around Black Lake. So those are the only two prescribed forest fire events in the area. As far as anything else, I haven't heard of anything as far as somebody burning something even legally. I'm sure there's probably been a lot of burn permits issued though with the amount of weeds that have come up from the monsoon rains. But I can look into the amount of permits and where they're located.
Great. Nothing out of the line, sir?
I haven't heard of any fires at the landfill or anything like that as well, so I can definitely look into it. I'll check with the town.
There was a fire on the...
Last day?
Yes, and it was burning till this morning.
I mean, there was some fires?
Yeah, there was a lot of combustion by the pasture.
Covered with smoke, I mean...
I guess where they keep the, where they keep the bales, it caught on fire. I don't know how or what, but I saw it, yeah.
Yeah, I was just told that it was some of the bales that used to beat the buffalo, but probably doesn't necessarily share what's going on with the landfill and this stuff.
We can make a phone call, Commissioner.
So at this point, we're waiting to get that information back, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. And so I'd ask to table this until the next meeting so that we can bring the proper numbers back. We already have all the square footage, we already have everything mapped out, but I want to make sure that we have the exact number for each one of the spaces that's built.
And this one's just for the bottom floor?
That's correct. We've asked for numbers on the top floor also just for informational purposes, but at this point, numbers are, in particular for the bottom floor.
Reference the commercial rate.
Mr. Chairman? I don't, it doesn't make any sense that there would be one square foot, one per, $1 per square foot price for the whole bottom floor.
No, that's what I'm saying. They look at the property and if you're in the back by the jail, then that may be a little less than the storefront, one in the front and then the ones in the middle, but also one in the middle. We just don't have that figured. So it could be $22 upfront, it could be $18 in the middle and if you're at the back of the jail, it could be $16 a square foot. So that's what we're trying to figure out with that square footage is per area. So even though it's the bottom floor, it's still per area. Does that answer your question, Commissioner? Sorry.
It does. I think that an analysis would show that the differentiation is even bigger, but we'll see. And, you know, when I read generals, it just looked like it was flat rate for the bottom floor, which didn't make much sense or be particularly useful.
That's correct. That's why we're asking for other opinions on it.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Winter puts the update with Amita on the playground. She bailed on me.
Commissioner Duda, I don't have an update on that, but let me get with her and then if you want, we can walk up right after this meeting and we can touch base with her. I apologize for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chalitza. Well, you need a motion on that one?
No, I don't, I just wanted to...
Item 14, Commissioner Report and Matters, September 2014, Commission Calendar. Commissioners, Mr. Manager, Staff, remember if there's any changes? Okay. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I was hoping to see if you might be meeting with the town sometime in September, but obviously that hadn't been arranged yet, so I guess you'll let us know if and when that happens. I'm going to be gone like the last five or six days in September, I won't be around.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we actually had proposed a date of, I believe, of the next Tuesday, which was the ninth, but apparently that wasn't good for the town. And so it's my understanding that Renell and Kathy are working on those dates to come up with a different date on that. I don't know if the mayor has any questions or maybe he has an alternative date that has already been proposed.
No, there's just waiting on some alternative dates. That is the date of our regular meeting also and it just becomes pretty long if we meet from nine o'clock in the morning to nine o'clock at night. So it gets pretty long.
And what items are we looking for beyond the agenda?
There'll be some, and staff is working on that. I think the staff at the county and the staff at the town are working on the agenda items. They will be approved by both bodies, so, you know. One of the things that had been approved in our meeting was to ask the town, I mean, the county, if they are willing to work together on revitalization of the old county courthouse and, you know, if they want to help the town, that's one of the questions. The other question I think is...
There was also the JPA because we've said, the JPA has been sent out to Questa and to Touskegee. I believe those have been returning and so there was an update on that. Holy Cross Hospital. And then we also needed to get together on the animal shelter and the issues around that. The new contract that's been extended for an additional 90 days from the county's perspective. I'm not sure where the town lies on that, but that was the next discussion. If we run out of the 90 days, which is my understanding that this week there's actually going to be an area hearing, so we should have a lot more answers after this week for that. But those are some of the topics. And water, is there one on water? Water, yes, on the complex.
Can I get a hard copy of the schedule, I mean, of our calendar?
Yes.
If you would, just...
As well, Mr. Chalitza?
All the Commissioners like that we got, we can get one of those from the Commissioners.
You can put on the windshield of your truck there, Commissioner.
Okay, so go in second, clerk.
Commissioner Blakenburg?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda? Commissioner Brony?
Yes.
Chairman Rometta?
Yes.